First item is to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to tonight's Independence Township Planning Commission meeting. Agendas for the meetings are on the table if you haven't already grabbed one. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with that agenda unless that agenda is amended in a few minutes here when we get to it. Meetings from, and agendas from past meetings are available on the township website. Representatives from, for the township also here tonight are our township planning consultants, Megan Mason Minnick and Jason Longhurst of Noah Canfroes, our consulting engineer, and Brian Otman, our planning director. Next item on the agenda is roll call. Melinda?
Jason Borstein. Sam Morocco.
Here.
Bill Scarborough.
Here.
Belinda Billings here. Joe Suter.
Here.
Thank you. We have a small quorum, but we have a quorum. And my understanding is that our bylaws dictate that it's a majority of the people present, so we need three votes in favor of whatever any motion is in order for it to pass. Just for clarification. Review of the agenda. Anybody have any changes? Hearing none, how about a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented. Support?
Call of favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Next item is public comments for items not on the agenda. I want to emphasize, this is an opportunity we provide for the audience and the public to speak up on items that are not on the agenda. We, agenda items are always, audiences always offer an opportunity to speak up on agenda items when we get there, so we restrict this for items not on the agenda. If you have something to say, please raise your hand. You'll be recognized, when you're recognized, we ask you to come to the podium and give us your name and address and, and your comments. We'll do people here first and then we'll do the online people. So with that, I will open it up for public comments, please, for items not on the agenda. Anybody got anything to say? We've got a good crowd tonight. Nothing? How about online? We got, what do we have, three people, Brian? Four?
Yes, three.
Anybody online want anything to say? One more chance for the people here. All right, I will close the public hearing for items not on the agenda. Next item is the public hearing, PC file 2024-012, Verus Development Group. This is, the request is a final site plan approval for a Phase Three of the Walden Village Two Plan Unit Development consisting of restaurants, retail, and the Child Academy. In order to move this forward in an orderly fashion, I have put together what I call a discussion sequence, and I'd like to outline that because I would like to keep this moving in an orderly fashion. I would like everybody to recognize that they will have an opportunity to ask their questions, make their comments in the course of this discussion sequence. So I ask that you, you listen and, and attempt to follow it. I do this because it seems like people have a tendency to hurry up and want to jump in and get their comments out there and stuff like that. And I want to recognize you'll be given that opportunity, but let's please try and do it in an orderly sequence so we can move this along. So what I'm proposing is that first we'll give Megan the opportunity to explain the project and changes that have been made from the approved PUD plan. I will then give the applicant the opportunity to provide general comments on the overall plan and the changes from the approved PUD. After that, we'll hold a public hearing. And then the next item after the public hearing will be for the planning commission to determine if this is or is not a major or minor amendment. So we will, we will have that discussion and then we will reach a conclusion on the major or minor issue. After that, I'll give the commission members the opportunity to comment and ask questions or concerns in addition to those raised in the review letters provided by our consultants. After we do that, the commission members will have an opportunity to ask questions or concerns of our consultants regarding the specific issues they raised. I will then give the applicant the opportunity to address those issues and after that is done, we'll have a little more discussion and eventually hopefully move towards a motion. So, having said that, anybody got any questions on that process? Okay, Megan, you're up.
Thank you. So this is a final site plan and it's the final phase in the Walden Village PUD. That process was begun in 2019 and a final PUD plan with multiple change, with multiple phases was approved in March 30th, 2021. In that same year, a major change was requested and then recommended by, for Planning Commission approval in June of 2021. In that, in that amended final PUD plan, overall, there were five phases. This is the last half of the final phase. And it's, you might get a little, it's called Phase Three, the second half of Phase Three, but it was just that phases one, two, four, and five have already been approved and they're either constructed or under construction. So, your role, the role, the planning commission's role is to review the final site plan against the preliminary plan and the permit conditions and make a recommendation to the township board. What you're looking at is a proposal for a 4,298 square foot standalone restaurant, a 14,460 square foot building with a restaurant, office, retail, office and retail uses, and then 11,470 square foot childcare center. The site plan also proposes outdoor patio and plaza, plaza spaces facing Walden Road and Walden Center Drive, as well as between, there's a area that's in between, that's a pedestrian walkway between the standalone restaurant and the restaurant, retail office, mixed-use building. The layouts are slightly different than the approved final PUD plan for overall. The number of buildings have been reduced from, from, originally it was four buildings, it's been reduced to three. There are a number of setbacks, deviations that are listed in our, in our letter. If, and then as the chair indicated, part of your decision process tonight would not only be whether or not a recommendation to the township board, but also whether those amendments on the decrease in the number of buildings and the setbacks constitute a minor amendment.
Questions, comments? Is the applicant, I assume, is here? Do you, would you like to add anything as, as far as general comments or the changes you've made? And maybe your interpretation of whether you consider it major or minor?
Good evening and Happy New Year to the commission. I just wanted to thank you all for taking this opportunity to allow us to be here before you. This is a project that, in our world, has been going on for two and a half years.
Can I get your name?
Yep, my name is Frank R. Corey with Verus Development Group. So once again, I wanted to thank you all for being here this evening. We're excited to be here. This project had originally dated back two and a half plus years ago and it's no secret, we've had a number of meetings with, with the powers to be at this, at the township and we're excited to be here to present a final site plan that we feel will be a great complement to all that's taken place in the surrounding area. I'd like to now introduce Jim Epping to touch a little more on the project.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Planning Commission, thank you again. My name is Jim Epping. I am a land planner and landscape architect of the area, also a resident of Independence Township. My home address is 9336 Sashabaw here in the township. I appreciate the organization and how you want to go through this. It's different than ours, so if you don't mind, I'll jump to your points in our presentation specific to those, those changes. It really, as I understand it, and Megan may clarify or the commission may clarify, it's essentially three, what we are considering, would like to consider minor amendments to the PUD. The PUD, of course, was designed as a, as a overall plan. This area is the western portion of Phase Three, which is the commercial portion of the project. The Independence Market, which is under construction, was the eastern portion of that Phase Three. Things that we've modified from that original PUD plan are the setbacks. The landscape to a certain extent, or at least was identified, and then the decrease in buildings from three to, from four to three. So, Brian, if, if we're able to flip through, and I, I'd like to go through the rest of this later because we'd like to talk about the architecture, but I recognize it'll be later. I'll maybe just click through. I want to get to our setback page, which is three or four slide, maybe a few more into it. Actually, it's past all these images. We can come back to these, unless you'd like to see these now, Ms. Chairman. Almost there. Kind of like fast forwarding through Netflix, you kind of get an idea what's going, that was it.
That was it.
Just one more. So, as the commission knows, in the overlay center of the township, the overlay district of the township, the setback lines are actually considered build-two lines. So in most of our zoning ordinance, we talk about you must be at least X number of feet from the, the property right-of-way line or the side yard or so forth. In our overlay district, it's actually the reverse. It's a, it's a mandate to a build-two line and you'll start to see a lot of that happening on Sashabaw with buildings like Starbucks and ideas like this where, where it's this notion of building, bringing buildings closer to the street, not having parking and circulation in front. With the PUD, we recognize that and agreed to it. And in most cases, our, our front setback line from Walden was 22 feet. What, what the, the P, as, as a minimum, and then things like the Meyer Market was actually built a little further back. So our changes to the setbacks are actually, in almost every case, a request to move the building slightly further back from the right-of-way line or from the, the setback line as opposed to trying to encroach or move it closer. So in the case of the, the standalone restaurant in, at, at the eastern portion of it, that front building, the, the previous plan showed it to be 20-foot. We deliberately tried to line that building up with the Meyer Market as opposed to putting it just 20-foot off the right-of-way line to give us more room for those plazas and for some of those gathering spaces in the front. And so rather than having that building 20-foot off the property, off the right-of-way line, we're asking for it to be just about 31-foot or 30, 30.8-foot. Part of that measurement is a little confused. I don't think you can see it on this drawing, but at the bottom right-hand corner of it, the actual right-of-way line jogs in about 10-foot. So right at that corner, that's where that third, that's where that measurement is coming from to, to confuse it. As you go down a little bit further to the next building, and I'm having trouble seeing this that far away, I'm sorry, but the, the setbacks are different. So in the case of both of the retail and restaurant buildings, they're consistent with the Meyer Drive. They're obviously consistent with each other there. It's just the dimension from the right-of-way to the building itself. We're asking it for, to be slightly further back than what the original PUD did. So again, it's unlike most setback requests where we're actually asking to put it closer to something. Here, we're pushing it a little further from the road. We got some feedback in the community when the market went up that people questioned why it was so close to the road. So we deliberately said, let's, let's create more green space in front, more landscape space and more patio space. With the, the daycare building, which we'll talk about a little bit, again, if you look in the plan set that you have in your packets, the right-of-way jogs again. So it's an inconsistent right-of-way. The, the daycare building is brought closer to the, to the safety path. The safety path follows the road. And again, here, we're asking for it to be, I think we're just one-foot difference than what was anticipated, 22-foot. In that case, we're asking for it to be 21-foot. So in that case of the daycare, it does shift one-foot closer than was anticipated. And we did that so that we can have more landscape and more playground space in the back. So that, that would be really the bulk of the, or all, all of the setback issues. They're all intentioned to move them, in almost every case, further back. The patios are a little bit closer. We did that for two reasons. The patio on the new road, Walden Center Drive North, is only about eight-foot off of the right-of-way. And again, this isn't off the road, this is off the right-of-way, so essentially distance to the sidewalk or the safety path. We did that for two reasons, so that that patio could really become an active spot in the community. And we also wanted to make sure that that passageway between the two buildings, we'll look at some, some drawings of that later, but that, in my opinion, is going to be a really exciting kind of gathering space and we, we wanted to make that distance between those buildings as generous as possible because you'll see in a minute how we'll activate that space with the restaurants and the, the different uses there. Decreases in the building, again, the original plan anticipated four buildings and we've obviously gone to three buildings. Part of the, the early plans or the early thoughts in the, in this area for the original PUD, we adopted or acquired late in the game that one standalone house that's out there that's on the western edge of this area, that wasn't part of the original early plans of the PUD, but as we went through the, the public process and the approval process, that became incorporated. And it, for, for a short period of time, it was actually considered to try and keep that home and to rehab it and perhaps make it a, you know, some type of a chiropractor office or some type of medical use like that. As we learned more about that house and investigated, it just became clear that it wasn't feasible to keep that house. And so, so through the evolution of the plans, that house went away. We are lucky enough to begin to work with Everbrook School and we'll talk more about that organization and what we're bringing to the community here. But that was the reason, is the demolition or the, the future demolition of that existing house caused it to go from four buildings to, to three. And then lastly, I don't know if this is part of the minor or major amendment, but the landscape, I know Megan brought up in her, her plan and wanted the planning commission to at least consider that. What we've done is we've, we've got roughly about 74 trees, I counted, just being put within this eastern portion, I'm sorry, western portion of the commercial. What, what was designed is with the overall PUD and as part of the landscape architecture of the overall PUD, is we've got just as much landscape on the townhome side along that western border. So when we take the new landscape that's being proposed and the future, or the future landscape that'll be built in the townhome, we more than double the opacity requirements in, in buffers. We do the same thing on that north end of the parking lot where we've got rows of arborvitae's and big viburnums coupled with evergreen trees and deciduous trees, flowering trees. So we really, as a landscape architect, I'm, I'm excited about the landscape. It really does buffer it. What's good about a PUD is the residents who are, who are building homes and buying homes in the community certainly were aware of this. And so it's unlike maybe different developments where, where I didn't anticipate a development going in next to my house. This is, the, these are owners that are, you know, moving here specifically because they're excited about these additions. Nonetheless, we've really, I think, over-indexed on landscaping and have provided good-sized plants exceeding the ordinance with height as well as opacity. Were there other elements that you were considering, need information about as it related to the minor-major amendment?
No, I think I'm good. Anybody else? You want to elaborate on anything on the minor-major part? Go ahead, Joe.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure it's the minor-major part, it is the setback part. I guess I'm, what I looked at and read and then what you presented are different.
Okay.
In terms of setbacks, right?
I don't know.
You have the plans, right?
Yeah, you, I mean, those are the plans.
Yeah, I mean, like the, if I'm reading my part right, the, the setback for the, on the lower end of the daycare center on the plans goes through the front of the building, through the front of it. That's what's on here, but that's not what's on here. So I'm just wondering, which is right? And maybe I am not reading the print right because I am not an architectural expert or any kind of expert.
So, Planning Commissioner Suter, I think what you're seeing is that there is a dash line on the site plan that notes where that 22-foot setback is that's required by the permit conditions. But the building is proposed to be 21-feet away, so there's a one-foot encroachment or one-foot difference between what the setback is and what they're proposing. And so that's one of the minor amendments that they're asked, one of the amendments they're asking you to look at and whether you feel like that is minor or not. Does that make sense?
Well, it, it does make sense, but I mean, I'm still seeing two different stories here in terms of what's up there and what's here. The dash lines here don't match up with the dash lines there.
Mr. Suter, perhaps, the red line is not on your plans. That was a line that I put on today's graphic just to say, this is the total area. So that, that is, I apologize if that's a confusion. That red line is, just kind of outlines the general area that we're talking about. general area that we're talking about. Megan is correct that, as I mentioned, with the daycare, where the retail buildings were actually sliding further from the right-of-way line and the adjustment is to make it a greater distance from the road. I agree that with the daycare, we have moved it one-foot closer to the road. And so, that is what is pointed out in the Carlisle report and what you're seeing with that dash line on your plan. The daycare building has slid one-foot, I'll say, to the south, and the blue buildings, the retail restaurant buildings have moved about 10-foot or more to the north.
But the daycare building, it doesn't appear that you're showing the 22-foot setback line on that plan. Is that correct?
What's interesting, and you'll see it in your packet, is the right-of-way and that area actually drops down, and most of us think of the sidewalk as the right-of-way line or the safety path as the right-of-way line. In that case, the safety path actually goes through the right-of-way line, so it's a little bit of a, you know, atypical from what we're all used to looking at plans is you can normally just say, "Hey, there's the safety path line. I'll assume that's also nearly the right-of-way line." In this case, those lines are not parallel. But I can say that the daycare building is proposed to be 21-foot parallel off from the right-of-way line as opposed to 22.
Joe, you satisfied?
Just a question maybe for Brian, then that would do it. So, what I'm looking at, you know, for one way or the other, is not represented exactly on here, and there's different lines and whatnot and so forth. That's okay. Are the setbacks determined when the PUD was written?
Yes.
I mean, setbacks are not part of zoning or anything like that. It's part of the PUD plan.
They are part of the permit conditions.
Okay.
So, in the permit conditions, they are listed.
Wrong terms, yeah. So, you're satisfied that the plan that we're looking at meets those with the exception of this one-foot on the movement of the daycare building? Is that basically right?
That's basically right. On the buildings, on the patio areas, both in, both fronting, on the patio areas, those are, on the side, on the Walden Center, that is eight-feet when the minimum, the minimum setback is 13-feet, and we flag that as, as a, someplace where they don't match.
Right.
Also, from the rear of the daycare to the property line that's nearest, that is 50.3-feet when 65-feet was required.
Okay. Now, the, just, again, I wasn't around in 2020. Well, I was, but not here. So, I was wrong way before that. The, my understanding, and I'm sure I'm wrong, is that the term setback is from the property line, it's definition now, I don't know if it's any township definition, but from the property line to the face of the building.
Yes.
That's a setback.
That is a setback.
Okay. So, I mean, do we have setbacks for patios when it's, patio is in the building?
In the permit conditions, there was a setback for patios.
Because they were separate, I mean, it was a separate set of conditions.
Yes, it was separately listed.
It's not a normal setback.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And then, I had one other question because we talked about it, and it's buffering. Okay. If you have a, and this is a general question now, if you have a 20-foot buffer and a 30-foot setback, I mean, they can be, that can be fine, I mean, because they're different. A buffering setback, is that's not the right word, buffering area or something like that, is different from a setback area, and you can define it differently and build to it differently.
Yes, but there are ordinance requirements around that. So, in the zoning ordinance, there's a 25-foot green buffer that's required from the street. So, essentially, from the street right-of-way or the front setback. So, you can see there's a front setback parking lot and structure requirement that that 25-feet is green. And so, in the original, in the final PUD permit conditions, there was a variance from, it allowed that to vary to 22-feet, and then we've got this going forward. In terms of from the rear or the side, from the zoning ordinance point of view, it's the types of uses, and if they're buffered and what your standard is, is 80% opacity. And so, when you're looking at this, they're trying to decide whether this is a minor amendment or not, you're looking at what was originally, what was originally proposed and approved, which is, I believe, sheet two of the plans that were given to you, and then looking at what they've proposed, that there's 80% opacity so that you can only see, when you're looking at it and it's fully grown and let's say it's in the winter, you can only see through 20% of it. So, obviously, a fence would be 100% opacity. But if you felt like there should be a certain distance of open green space from the rear or the side, that's not one of the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
But it could be a requirement if you put it into the PUD conditions or whatever you call it. I'm just saying it could be, I'm not saying it was.
In theory, it could be, it would be unusual for that to be required at this point in a final, in a final site plan for a PUD at this phase. However, if you were concerned about the attached single-family that is adjacent to the proposed daycare, I would recommend that you look at what the opacity is and what the buffering is there. And there are also maybe some issues that you feel might need to be addressed in terms of noise, and talk with the applicant about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
But the opacity you're measuring is the housing that's going adjacent to this and that gets built, they have buffering requirements too. The opacity you're talking about is provided by what this applicant is doing. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes and no.
Okay.
Yes, in that you're looking at what the applicant is proposing for this phase. However, this is an unusual situation in that it's a multi-phase development where also that they can propose and they do have the ability to put other landscaping on property that's beyond this phase because it's under a single entity as part of a PUD.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Much more closer to a major than, if we're changing major boundaries.
If they change the boundaries, yes, that would be a major, that would be-
But you're saying they could do that. They could put landscaping all on the, on the housing side of the property line.
And I believe that's what the applicant is also proposing.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, Phase One was approved with a landscape plan. That landscape plan planted on Phase One as a requirement of Polte Homes, who is building Phase One, is already required to plant and install the landscape on, I'll call it, the western side of that boundary line as a condition of Phase One. That condition of Phase One met the 80% opacity. What we are doing now with Phase Three on the east side of that exact same line is essentially doubling it. So, what I'm suggesting is that Phase One was approved and is required and will plant a full landscape meeting or exceeding the 80% of capacity. Now, Phase Three will also plant an additional landscape that'll meet it. So, both sides meet it and therefore together they more than double it.
It'll be 160%?
160%, but it's going to be a heck of a lot of landscaping, and I think, you know, we've designed it because we were able to design both halves. The plants complement each other. We've been very careful not to over-index on any particular variety, so from a horticultural health point of view, I feel real good about it. But it's going to be a thick landscape, and both sides are essentially required to do it. So, we're not, nothing we're proposing tonight has any impact. We're not stepping over that line. We're not planting over that line. We're just able to show here that Phase One is going to meet its requirements. Phase Three is going to essentially double those requirements.
And on your landscape plan, you're showing some plantings on the housing side of the property line. Does that match what their plans were required to do?
Yes, sir, exactly.
Okay. Anything that, okay. Joe, you off that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just talking about major and minor right now.
Yeah.
We're not picking the plan apart.
Is it still a major or minor?
Okay. I'm still talking landscape.
But that's part of the plan.
Okay.
Unless it's-
Unless the landscaping pertains to the setback. Okay?
Well, I guess that, if, Megan?
Yeah.
I don't want to, Belinda, you can say what you were going to say if you want to.
Well, I'm just saying, there at the back, it looks like all the landscape is on the attached condo side, but none on the reach-out side. I know there's parking lot back there, but on that line going back, I don't see any on the right side.
If I may, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, or Megan can, the stuff you're seeing on the housing side of the property line, the plan does designate that as, I forget how the wording, but that is what the housing developer, Polte, is required to put. I think the red line around the west side and the north side of the daycare building is pretty much on top of an arborvitae row that you have proposed. So, that's why you don't, that's what he's proposing on his piece of property.
Yes, sir.
Okay. See you.
I guess my question would be is if we want to increase the buffering of the commercial, I'm only interested in the commercial property. I'm not interested in the residential property. We need to focus on the property. We're talking about the, is if, if we want more buffering on the commercial side, that's going to affect their drive, their parking, their other things.
Yes.
Do we give them the opportunity to rework the plan to put it inside the footprint? Or do we, or do we make a major amendment and they go back and they redesign, they move their boundary lines to gain more ground up against the residential and see if we're going to bite on that?
For a minor amendment, what would be possible is if there was additional area added without, additional open space area. So, I, let's say you wanted 25-feet from that back line where it kind of juts up where the dumpster is proposed. Then, for a minor amendment, they would be asked to, they would be asked to move those. And then, I need to check the ordinance, but I think moving phasing, let me check the ordinance to see if moving phasing lines is a minor or major amendment because there's some guidance in the-
I want to give them the opportunity, if we want to have some changes made and which way they want to go about it. They could do it as a minor internally, or it would be a major externally, and I don't want to get into the depths of it until we determine how that would affect whether it's a major or whether it's a minor. Then, they can decide if there's any, you know, if they want to make any, how they would address the concerns.
Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Yes.
Respond to Mr. Morocco. From our perspective, from my perspective, we're confident that the proposed landscape on its own meets the requirements or frankly exceeds the requirements. 80% opacity is a little difficult to measure, but certainly the township has a lot of projects, and we've done a lot of projects here. And so, I'm confident that when we look at our plant list and the sizes and the spacing that we meet that. We have looked internally in terms of circulation and creating additional space on that area. What has been consistent in the plan is that north-south road that comes off of Walden. Of course, the location of the curb cut at Walden really is immovable because of the distance from Walden Center Drive. We have looked at different area, different alternatives of essentially eliminating that connection going north, and we chose not to eliminate it because we think that there's an opportunity, and part of the design of the overall PUD is to have a lot of alternative options, a lot of routes that I can take within it to disperse traffic. And so, the more connections we have, the better. One option that we looked at was actually shifting that road to the east and having it kind of dogleg and come out about where the dumpster is. What we do in that case, though, is align those headlights more directly with the homes that are going to be built across the street. And so, the location of this is not only consistent with the original PUD, but it's to the back or to the rear of the homes that will be built across the street so that no headlights would be going into any of the windows or into the front area of those homes. And so, it was, it was done with a lot of great thought. The, I'm confident again in the landscape and our ability to plant it on this property as it's currently defined, and then again doubling it with the existing. But I think moving that road or eliminating that road kind of has cascading effects that are, in my opinion, would have, you know, more detriment to the overall neighborhood than adding additional feet for additional landscape.
In terms of the ordinance, the following changes are considered major for which a major amendment is required. Change in concept of development, change in use or character of the development, change in type of dwelling unit as identified on the approved area plan, increase in the number of dwelling units density, increase in the non-residential floor area over 5%, rearrangements of lots, blocks, and building tracks, change in character or function of any street, reduction in land area set aside for common space or relocation of such areas, and increase in building height. Minor changes include the, shall include the following. A change in residential floor area, an increase in non-residential floor area of 5% or less, minor variations in layout which do not constitute major changes, and a change in the phasing of the development.
So, on the first one, you had touched on building, building footprints. Was in there maybe third or fourth down the list, changing building placements?
Rearrangements of lots, blocks, and building tracks.
Okay. I'm not, even being in the industry, I don't know what those, some of those mean.
So, lots would be an individual, I would say that their reduction of three buildings to four is not a rearrangement of those blocks. It would be a consolidation, and they're not moving any roads that were, or driveways that were proposed as part of it. So, that rearrangement, I don't think under this constitutes a major amendment as it's outlined.
What's a building tract?
A building tract is an older term in terms of, and those are often in plaits.
In plaits?
Plaits.
Ah, okay.
So, I guess it comes back for me, Mr. Chairman, is I'm not satisfied with the buffering to the residential on the commercial property, and I don't want to make, I don't want to make it a major amendment because of that if they have, if there's any chance that, if that's a consensus of the board, or if they were going to make that move to get the buffering bigger, it's going to change things. And whether they do it inside or out is the question. So, I'm not sure how you would, do we take it to that point and discuss what we would think is, would be better, or what would be the best plan?
It kind of sounds to me like maybe we just put the decision on a major manner in hold for now and talk about some of the other stuff. It sounds like, you know, what you're saying is you're not ready to make that decision yet.
But I don't want to, I want to make sure that there's, I'm not saying there shouldn't be a path to succeed, but I want to make sure that the options there to get to that point, because I'm not satisfied with the buffering. So, how we fix the buffering? That's, and does that change it? I don't, you know, if we can fix that problem and keep it a minor, then I think personally, my opinion is we're still in the minor phases. It's cosmetic, site plan, buffering, changes, the minor setback, changes in the front, you know, doesn't constitute going back and starting the whole PUD process again in my mind. But what they have to do to comply with what I would like to see, I want that to be an option for the, you know, I want that to be a discussion. So, we're forthright up front. I don't want to make it a stumbling block.
Yeah, no, no. And so, I think, I would say that if it occurred in the area of this phasing, then that- then that looks to file under the minor changes according to the ordinance.
So just to be, and we're still in the, so if you want to table, get to the, this.
Yeah.
I'll let you handle how you want to get out of the public hearing and, or into the, into the, our discussion.
Yeah.
You deal with that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, and, and don't mean to interrupt, but I wanted to at least interrupt. And, and in the spirit of trying to, you know, check off things and work together, obviously we, you know, it's just as important to us as it is to the township. Are there specifics, you know, as a landscape architect and as the registered landscape architect for both sides of that line, are there specific items that, that we can at least understand and say, hey, yeah, we can take care of that? Or boy, we'd have to think about that. But it's helpful for us at this stage to frankly be specific. And if we're saying, boy, I, you know, a buffer to me needs to be 65 feet wide, that's different as opposed to say, boy, a buffer to me, all plants have to be seven and a half feet tall, that type of thing. So the specifics would be helpful for us.
Uh, and let's, let's see if we can get there. I think there might be, you know, I don't know, I know some of the other issues Megan has raised and whatever other planning commission members, they may have influence on other changes that you may need to make. So my suggestion is we put the major, minor decision on hold. Maybe we can come back and do it tonight, or maybe we'll, you know, we'll see where it takes us. So if everybody's okay with that, let's put that on hold and let's get into, um, uh, the rest of the project, not just those setback issues. So, um, everybody okay with that? All right. Commission members, um, if, please ask comments, raise any questions or concerns you have in addition to those that are cited in the review letters. Is there anything else? Just to make sure we get everything on the table. And Sam, I think you've, why don't we start with you, you've raised that.
Yeah, my biggest concern is the buffering of the residence. We've been very lenient with the, in my opinion, with the density of this project. When you look at it from an aerial view, it's just major, major residential density. The setbacks are, are small and tight. I don't, I never was a big supporter of, of protecting single family, you know, much more than we do multi-family because they're still families and these are not, this isn't cheap housing and they deserve, uh, buffering. So my biggest thing that caught my eye was the 25-foot rear yard setback, which is not depicted here because we're addressing the front setbacks, but there is a page that does address. I don't know if we can get to it, Brian, it shows the 25-foot.
No, I don't, I didn't.
It's in the blueprints that show.
Yeah, it might. I don't have on that disc that I gave you, Brian, the whole set, but I'm sure that you could pull it up to set.
So I, uh, to be forthright, I mean, I've had this argument before. I've tried to get the setbacks to be bigger to protect the residential houses adjacent to commercial. We do allow quite a, quite a tight tolerance to it. And, um, we've made lots of concessions on this project. It's, it's been a very controversial project. I, I have no issues with the commercial. I think that they've done a good job. I've often, I mean, for the people who don't know, I was on the planning commission way back when this was started and I've defended the concept of this plan. I don't agree with the density that was ever approved, but I do defend the, the, the concept. I'm constantly explaining to people why the Myers is so close to the road, why we want walkability, why we want the patios, why we want the community areas. That is something that, and once I explain it to people, they understand. They didn't understand just by seeing the Myers on the road. It created a, you know, like, what the heck, you know?
It's different.
It's like, well, you wouldn't want to look at a parking lot either, and when I explain it to them, they, they get it. And what we were trying to achieve in the Sashaba corridor, my concern, and always is the concern, is the quality of life, the, the value of the people's homes, the proximity to commercial. I think personally in the township, it's, it's tighter than I would like it and I've made that, that public at many meetings over the decades. But what I have an issue with is, I don't know if this is, this, this isn't the one, uh, I'd actually be better off probably just putting the one he had up that shows the whole project because this doesn't show the rear parking lots. So there's a 25-foot rear yard setback, that's.
Is that better?
That's fine. And it's right here. So the 25-foot rear yard setback runs through this dumpster, through all these parking spots, down the center of this road, and then comes across here and then goes through these parking spots, through this dumpster and goes back and then down the side. And we literally are only allowing a 25-foot rear yard setback. And I think that we should, that in my opinion, for me to promote the project, I think that that 25-foot, which to me is, is wide, is not even as wide as this room, should be the buffer that is provided to protect those residents from the, the commercial, the sound, the people. I mean, this is somebody's home right here. We don't even have room to do 25 feet of buffering to this building. So that's, this would, this whole building is, you know, would be an issue. We have no, the, the 25-foot runs right through here. I mean, these are, these people's houses are only, are probably 25 feet from the property line. So, you know, this dotted line doesn't, this is the property line, you know, there, there's, these trees are on the property line, right on the property line. There's no buffering on this property to buffer these houses. And we don't use other people's properties. The Pulte controls this property and these trees and this maintenance, and they don't control this. So I think it's a mistake to think that, just like the travesty that happened with cutting down all the trees along the expressway where we, you know, those are, that's on this property. It didn't, it wasn't relevant what MDOT did with their trees because we don't count trees that aren't on the property we're approving. So that's, that's my, that's, that's my, um, I'm not going to get into a million little nuts and bolts. That's my biggest thing. I think that on a project this size with that much density, on a 70-acre parcel, that if we can't provide 25 feet of green space, heavily vegetated, between heavy commercial and someone's house, I think that that's not doing a very good job of protecting all of these residents. And it's as dense as this is, it's a lot of them. It's not like the cul-de-sac on the one side that had 13 homes, you know? This affects dozens of people. So that, that's in a nutshell, my biggest issue.
I've got four issues that were not, I don't believe were raised by either Megan or, or Jason. Number one, I'm not crazy about the different style of the building of the daycare facility. I realize with the design, it'll be somewhat segregated. It's, it's got its own separate parking area. It's set back a little further. You know, I'm just curious what the rest of the commission thinks on that. It is a different style. I had initially envisioned that these would all be somewhat matching. I would like to know, I remember, I don't remember if it was a township board meeting or a planning commission meeting, but there were some people in the audience in some of the long time existing houses that border, um, the, the Walden Village project. And there were some flooding issues. And I'd like to know if those have been corrected because this, this is going to tie into the drainage system for the whole entire, uh, complex, I assume. And I'd like to know that that problem's been, been resolved. I am dis, I, I'm reading your plans to indicate that pretty much this entire parcel will be clear cut. You're not making any effort to save any of the existing trees. And there, there's a nice little woodlands on this property. Your plans do indicate that that large tree in the, uh, southwest corner will be removed. But, and then, and then there are, there's the woodlands and then there's freestanding trees more in the total western area. None of those other ones are indicated as to be removed. So I'm disappointed it doesn't appear, I'd like you to confirm that you're going to remove all of those. And I'm disappointed that doesn't appear to be much of an effort to save any of the trees there. And then I finally have a, a question. On the doors, um, it does not appear to me that there are doors for the two restaurants onto your two side and Walden side patios. I'm curious why. It seems if you want people to go out there and eat, you should include doors. And maybe I'm missing it. And, but in contra, conflicting with that, there appears to be a lot of doors on the backside or Walden Street side of the daycare center. It seems like particularly with that being closer to the road, that might be a security issue.
Mr. Chairman, if you may, if I may, I didn't, it, it might be helpful if I am able to go through my presentation because I had kind of a organized way to go through it. We kind of jumped into the.
Okay.
Setback issues in which, which I, it made sense to me. But it might be helpful for, for the audience and for the commission if I just go through it kind of the way we had planned and then maybe make sure that it hits some of those.
Before you do that?
Sure.
I assume you've read the review letter, so you're aware of all the issues they've raised. So let me ask if other commission members have other issues, again, other than what's been raised by the, uh, the consultants. Belinda?
Well, I did have a question and it's not on this side, it's on the site where the residential is. On one of the site plans you showed, I think it was the topography map, there were two ponds. What happened to those ponds? Because it looks like there's going to be residential built on that space now. So, and I'm just wondering if that is going to affect this property in any way?
Good point. Those are temporary ponds. Those were constructed as those roads were being constructed and those are temporary ponds. The, the permit drawings and the, the engineering drawings show those will ultimately be removed and homes, townhomes will be put on those. So those weren't original. Those were part of the, the early phase construction as a temporary stormwater system.
So is the stormwater underground? Is that what you're telling me?
There's, and Mr. Longhurst can speak to this more accurately than I perhaps as, as the township engineer. But the entire master plan development has a regional stormwater system that even includes stormwater that comes underneath I-75, goes into a detention pond, makes its way through the site as planned, as actually planned about 20 years ago, crosses under Walden Road, actually cuts past this building and continues going south into some of the ponds. And that, that regional system was designed by the township and its engineers 20 or 25 years ago and this is kind of a part of that.
And what they've done to supplement that is provide pretreatment. So we're doing mechanical structures that are treating the water, but all of the detentions provided offsite for this project.
What ponds do they ultimately release to?
Uh, it's all part of the Sashaba regional drain. So there's a whole network of ponds, you know, basically the lake south up here and then the whole wetland complex that goes down to the south and through the golf course and then ultimately across the, the maybe down there. So that, that's the ultimate drainage path that everything's flowing through.
Can I ask you a question on that point? So are all, is this whole entire project under that SAD?
The, yeah.
To pay for the Sashaba drain?
Correct. And they were allocated a, a release rate as part of that SAD.
Okay.
You set, Belinda? Joe?
I'll set, I'll set.
Anybody else? Cam? Any other issues other than, okay. Uh, yes, please, um.
I'll be quick because we've talked about so much. Do you want to go back? Please. And, and frankly, most of my presentation are pitchers. So we can skip pretty quickly. Again, of this area, this is 4.17 acres. The original commercial piece was, I believe, about 11 and a half. So this is just about 25% or a third of the, the commercial portion of it. We've obviously looked at the boundaries and the various sized buildings. In total, it's 30,000 buildings. It's, it's interesting to know that the original PUD allowed for 86,000 square feet of retail. In total, after this is built, should it be approved, we'll have 80,000 or just over 80,000. So the, uh, the PUD is, is going to put in about 5,700 square feet less than it was originally approved. As you've seen, and it's in our packet, but we're very, very proud of it. I should say that our entire team is, is here today. Our engineers from Stonefield, our architects from Krieger Klatt, obviously Frank and Joe and their entire team. Krieger Klatt, I think, has done just an extraordinary job of the architecture, trying to understand the, the right scale, the right materials. What's great about these buildings are they are four-sided buildings. That's one of the, the challenges is when we, as a community, build, bring the buildings up to the street. Now all four sides become important. And some buildings, and some architects frankly do this better than others. I'm, I'm really, really proud of these. As a resident, I'm looking forward to it because these truly are four-sided buildings. The materials are equal on all side. The glass is essentially equal on all sides. The, the pedestrian touch or ability to get into the buildings is equal on all sides. So it does provide a little bit of operational challenges, but there's enough examples of these types of buildings now that, that retailers and operators like Frank and his team certainly do it well. This is at the corner, the, the, we've brought throughout the frontage and really into the buildings, the Sashaba overlay design standards, meaning a lot of the pillars and stands, sandstone that you see throughout the community. This, um, planting structure is a mirror example of what the Independence Market built across the street. So now when I come into Walden Center Drive North, it'll have a, a symmetrical landscape on either side. In this case, where the Meyer patio is up a little higher, this patio is down right at that level. You'll see, obviously, when you go out there, there, that there are grade changes as I move west on Sashaba. And so now the patio for this restaurant is tucked right behind this wall. I think it's really going to activate the, the corner and, and bring people out to the street, which is one of those goals of, of our overlay district. Brian? This is looking the other way, so this is down the safety path. We've already extended the safety path in front of the market. We've also extended that as part of the PUD all the way up to Walters Road. And, and so it's an easier path to the high school. This will connect that loop. Some of the images start to show, and Mr. Chairman, you, you asked about the trees. The plan is very, very consistent with what was always proposed. If you go out there now, you'll probably recognize that this is probably the hilliest part of the, of the development. And it was always planned as from an engineering point of view, as well as from a, a design point of view, that this area would have to be graded so that it can evenly get from, say, the, the, um, the entrance road up to the townhomes. It'll have to be a kind of a, a, a nice consistent grade so that these buildings can be set onto pads. Unfortunately, that does mean, and we always, we're very clear about that, that those trees will come down. But again, the overall landscape, we, we think adds to that, you know, adds to the experience of what's going to be here, both in terms of screening density as well as just the, the actual landscape and plazas and parts that I come up and actually sit and touch and enjoy. The, uh, one of the cool things I think is going to happen is we've got a series of different entrance points into this plaza from the safety path. So as families and runners and people go up and down that safety path, they'll be able to step right into these different plazas. This is the area between the restaurant and the eastern port, part of the mixed-use building. And this is going to be what we would typically call a passageway. We're designing overhead lighting, wall sconce lighting. You can envision a lot of patios and activity. So this really is that area where ideally residents, families, visitors are going to hang out. They're going to stop and, and get some ice cream or, or whatever those restaurants might happen to be. But this is the area where people will walk through. There'll be bike racks within the development so that families can stop and park their bikes and really just enjoy it as part of the community.
Did I miss the doors?
The doors, I'll, I'll look at that. The buildings have doors on the front and the back. I'll have to pull out the architecture. Rachel, are, will there be doors? This is, Rachel, our architect, maybe you can come up and just address the doors, please.
Good evening, Rachel with Krieger Klatt Architects. There will be doors out to the patio.
Can you, next step, show them on the plan?
Yes.
Just so we know that. I mean, I, I want the outdoor areas to be a success and it seems like if.
There will be access.
Okay.
I apologize for that, but yeah, it's a good point.
Brian, if we can go to the next slide. So this is now looking, if I'm standing in the north with my. So this is now looking, uh, if I'm standing in the north with my back to the parking lot, I'm now looking towards, uh, through the buildings towards Walden Road, really to demonstrate again, the architecture is four-sided architecture. Uh, because we have no circulation, because we have no parking out front, everyone who comes to the site by car will park in the back and then walk through. And so it's important that these buildings are fairly small, so I can either get through the passageway, get through the, the rear door or through the front door. Again, kind of an angle, this is I, if I'm standing on Walden Center Drive, this is the, the southern entrance, uh, that goes into or behind the retail buildings and the restaurant buildings. Um, we work closely with the planners and the township as the, uh, Independence Market was being designed, and so this road aligns perfectly with the Independence, um, Market Road closer to Walden, so it's a real safe intersection. It'll be a four-way stop, I'm sorry, a two-way stop, just people, um, entering the, or exiting the retail buildings. Walden Center Drive won't have a stop sign, that'll have the, the right of way to keep going north. Uh, this is the other end of, of the area. Uh, on this end, and you'll see it in our plans, the sidewalk actually curves up a little bit. We did that after our subcommittee review meetings, uh, where it became important to align the road. So, so both from a fire safety point of view, from a, a family traveling through here and every other reason, all of our intersections are four-way square intersections for safety, for ease. Kind of a cool thing that happened, uh, and we're actually showing this in our landscape plan as a raised planter, but this creates a, a nice little plaza with bike racks on the backside of that building. So again, there's seating on the front, there's also seating on the back of the buildings. This is a, a rendering of, of what the restaurant and retail will look like from across the street, really from the front lawn of this building. Um, and then to, just to the, to the left or to this, west of this will be the, uh, education building. Here's a view of it just from the top to show the width. And again, if we get back to those setbacks, um, you'll see how the patio to the, to the east goes, um, a little closer to the sidewalk at Walden Center Drive, and that was really specifically to maintain, uh, a really good usable space in between those buildings. Everbrook, uh, is our, is our partner in early, uh, childhood learning center. Uh, Rod Blight from their organization is here tonight, so can answer any questions, but this is a nationally known, uh, education group that specializes in early education. Uh, their, their students are really anywhere from six months to about six years. Um, there's, uh, uh, you know, full staff and, and really just a modern, modern, uh, education center that I think will be a good addition to all the growing families just that are moving to this development, much less the rest of our community. Um, the doors here, Mr. Mr. Scarborough, you mentioned, there are a series of doors that are operational doors, but, you know, the average family, the father who drops off their kids won't use that. They'll be the main door right on the corner facing west, I'm sorry, facing east. The rest of those doors are really just for fire and safety. Every classroom would have a, a direct access.
But they'll be locked so kids can't.
That's correct, yeah. It's, it's a very secure building, both from a landscape point of view, perimeter with, with, uh, security bollards as well as all the internal, uh, safety mechanisms. Back in the days when my kids went to daycare, uh, we used to have a big car line and just drop off and wish them luck. Nowadays, uh, everybody parks, parents walk in, check them in, and so, so Everbrook is really the leader in, in that. Again, if we have, uh, specific questions, Rod is here to, tonight to answer those, but, um, it's, it's a, an organization that has other locations in Michigan and throughout the country.
Thank you.
The architecture, uh, you had mentioned, um, we've gone through a couple different iterations, and again, Rachel and her team at Krieger Klatt have led this. Um, all the materials match the buildings. What we did, uh, because of the width of this building is a little wider, we got away from the flat roof, went to a standing metal seam roof. Um, it'll, it'll, uh, all the other materials will match in terms of masonry and, and brick and so forth, match the retail buildings, and frankly, will be very complimentary to the, to the market building. Reason that, that this building is placed where it is and why the architecture is a little different is because the, the master plan, our PUD plan, and really just kind of planning in general, always talks about transitional uses. And so as we move west, we get closer to existing residential, we get closer to our new townhomes, and so we've gone and started to migrate towards more of a residential style architecture with a, with a, uh, gabled roof and with the metal roof as opposed to a flat roof. Uh, so it was a combination of both the width of the building and then trying to be a, a, you know, a transitional building from the heavier retail to the residential as we go west.
Is this real standing seam or is it a corrugated pole barn roof? Because it looks like a pole barn roof.
I'm going to phone my, my friend Rachel one more time. Is it true standing metal seam or?
Correct, yes.
It's not a corrugated roof? Okay.
Brian? Um, the one thing that we didn't pick up here because the, the landscape lying behind the building is we do have the landscape at the building, but if you'll see your plans that were submitted in the landscape plan, we also have, you know, really robust landscaping that goes the whole length of that building. Uh, so it'll be a, a, a full landscape greenbelt across Sashba, I'm sorry, across Walden.
Do you have a picture of the side of it that faces the residential?
I don't, and I'm not even.
Because it shows like some fenced in corral, like pens on the end and, um,
There's a utility area. Rod, could you come in, up and introduce?
Because it's going to be, my concern is that we, you know, we de-emphasize the aesthetics of that, of the westerly facing building facing the residential, but it will be very viewable going down Walden and, um, the other side's much prettier and it's all brick, but it's like at the very, at the westerly side, we tried to save a couple bucks and use drive it instead of just bricking the building completely, you know? And it's only just that, that wall.
Rachel, from a material point of view?
So I'm sorry, I don't have these answers, but we've got a great team here.
Yeah. The piece you're looking at is for the, some of HVAC components in the corral, and we would screen that with either a fencing or the material, but we'll probably discuss what was proposed there, but.
Yeah, so we are proposing, uh, we are proposing an EPAS material up on the, um, end gables there, um.
But it's only that gable, is there any reason why you can't brick the whole building?
There's no reason, no. It's that gable and then, um, in the bottom right corner, um, that gable that Rod was just speaking about, um, that one is also, um, EPAS. It's not shown in the renderings, you can't see, it's just outside, but that one as well.
Yeah, I'm looking at it from the down view of the picture I have on my screen that's in the package, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
And the concern I have is that the, I would, I would prefer the building to be aesthetic from all four sides exactly the same, and it appears that we, you, you know, it got a little bit less expensive, just that one gable, and that is going to be a full, that's going to be the easterly view coming down Walden of this whole entire complex is going to be that end of the building. And it's not the entrance, so it's going to be the utilitarian side of the building. So if it's going to have a bunch of fences hiding AC units and mechanical stuff, I think that, that I would prefer if, if the gable, which would be elevated above all of that, was as aesthetically pleasing as the rest of the building and not just, it'd be different if it faced the back or it faced a different way, maybe I'd be more, you know, but I would, I'd like it to be as pretty on all four sides.
That's my point.
Understood.
Okay. Go ahead.
Do you have anything on that?
Mm-hmm. Good point.
Well, well, I'll, I'll take that as a note, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Morocco, so we'll, um, we'll, we'll add that to our list to, uh, address.
Thank you.
So, um, I think I was just on my last slide. Um, uh, you know, again, we're, we're very, very proud of this. I think, uh, the, the commission has certainly brought up, uh, valid points, points that I think are, are, can be addressed and will be addressed. Um, the key things that, that we really go back to is it, it, it's designed very, very much in keeping with the original PUD, with everything that was presented. Frankly, I think it's better than we indicated just in terms of architecture, uh, materials. It really, uh, has come back and I think has hit on all cylinders. The setbacks, I think, although it's, it's an unusual thing, we're, we were actually asking for larger setbacks as opposed to more shallow setbacks, except in one or two cases, and in those cases, it's just one or two feet. Um, and, and, and our reasons for doing that, I don't think are arbitrary, they're, they're to create better pedestrian spaces. Uh, and, and so, uh, in terms of the setbacks, uh, you know, we feel strongly that, that they're reasonable and very much in keeping with the original intent of the PUD. Um, all the other features of, of it in terms of architecture, in terms of uses, in terms of size, in terms of circulation, again, are consistent with what was always presented. They're consistent with the terms of the, um, PUD agreement, and I believe, uh, to the earlier point, are all minor in nature. Um, we, we are certainly able to work with the commission. We didn't hear anything tonight in terms of, uh, double checking the landscaping. We prefer not to lose that, uh, uh, access road because we think it does, uh, play a big role in our overall traffic circulation and, and will, uh, help eliminate congestion. Um, but I know that we can revisit that landscape, and if we have to put in, uh, some additional arborvitae's on our side, uh, and, and continue to work with, uh, Pulte on theirs, we'll, we'll do that. Um, there's nothing that we didn't hear tonight that we don't feel confident that we can address and, uh, would request that those would be conditions of your recommendation.
Thank you. All set? Okay, so now, um, let's see if, you know, if you have any questions, uh, for Megan and Jason, uh, on their comments, uh, please raise them. Uh, to get things moving. Megan, on page, um,
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Do you want to have the public hearing before we get into questions?
We did that.
No.
Didn't we?
We've got to open it up for the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll open the public hearing.
We did.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. At, uh, 7:13. No, wait, you're right. Yeah. Okay. Public hearing is open. Any comments from the audience? Thank you for reminding me. No comments? Audience? I mean, online audience?
Two people online.
See, I knew there wouldn't be any comments, so that's why.
Oh, you're good.
No, nobody else from the audience? Okay, I will post the public hearing at 7:14. So now questions for Megan and, and Jason. You make a comment, Megan. Driveway connection to Bradford Lane is proposed per the original PUD plan. Since the original approval, the layout of the PUD was amended to eliminate this connection. Uh, I'm, I'm having a little confusion. Can you elaborate on that?
So there was, um, as the original PUD plan that came through, then there was, uh, with the, with one of the residential developments, Bradford Lane was meant to, Bradford Lane goes, so you've got, you've got Walden Road.
Do you have the ability to pull up any of those?
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, there have been multiple iterations
Yes.
of the approved PUD plan, um, including changes in circulation. And so what that noted was that at one point in time, the driveway that would come, that's proposed to come down in between the daycare and the mixed use building, um, wasn't there. Um, there, there wasn't the same connections, um, and didn't go all the way up to Bradford Lane. Um, and then in this iteration, they went back, they, and then in the iteration that was approved in 2021, it had a, again, it restored that circulation pattern of basically a U with Bradford Lane at the top, Walden Woods coming up, that's in between the marketplace, the marketplace and the proposed restaurant, and then over there. So, yeah, that, that shows.
Okay. So it, it, it's pretty close to what was ultimately approved?
It is pretty close.
Okay. That's what I thought when I looked at all the plans, but I, you're worrying.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, can you elaborate on your comments regarding the trash dumpster?
Um, so in the rear parking lot of the, of the large parking pool, you can see that there's, um, a dumpster that is in the northwest corner. Um, it's a dual dumpster in the northwest corner, um, and you'll see that where it's at. Can I hover with the mouse?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Oh, okay, I'm going to go. Sorry, everyone. Um, our, our concern was this, and if some, if a truck was accessing it, then this could be blocked.
Okay.
Um, but if they were picking up trash, uh, hours when the, when, when it wasn't operational, um, then it wouldn't be as much of an issue.
But we really have no way of.
Can't control that.
Yeah.
Well, and wouldn't it be better away from the residential area?
That, that, that could be an issue too. The, the, it's across the road and it's also, the, one of the things is the topography falls. Um, so, uh, that's actually a little bit lower than the top of the sidewalk. Um, so it's, and so the houses are even higher, so it's not, when you're looking, thinking about how this would set up, it's not a flat, the topography's not flat in between where the houses are and where the top of the, top of the trash enclosure would be, it's actually sunken down.
I was just saying about noise.
Yeah, no, uh, and that's one of the reasons that we pointed that out.
Okay.
Is there, so Brian, go back to the last slide if you would, please. So my concern was more about the one in the daycare center parking lot that's in the rear yard setback. Right up against, you know, that's within 100 feet of somebody's house would be, that would be, that's the one that I was more concerned about than the other one, because there is at least a little bit of buffering by, there's not much buffering, but there's a, you know, but the other one is in the actual rear yard setback. So, um, to my original point about how thin this buffer is, I mean, and that's, that's, when you look at the daycare center, I mean, we're talking about the buffering between commercial and residential, and the property of commercial is the width of an arborvitae, literally. The width of one bush is all the buffering we're providing. And to me, that means the footprint's just too big, that, that, you know, there's just too much, it's just, we're eating up too much of the surface. If we can't provide more than one single solitary bush on a 70-acre parcel with all of this commercial and residential, then I think there, that there, this is too much for this parcel. There's got to be some way of buffering. I'm not putting any faith or any, you know, in another developer's maintenance of his trees and how they're going to do it, I just don't think that's good practice to count on your neighbor to provide your buffering. And arborvitae's are probably the worst thing because whenever you go with any species of the same tree, you run the risk of there being a problem with that species. And I learned that from, uh, arborists when I was planting pine trees, trying to buffer, they said, "Don't ever buy the same kind of pine trees" because it's, you know, there's, it's a possibility that a certain species could be affected by something. Now, what do you do if, if, when we're down to the, the width of a single bush, if something happens and those arborvitae's die, or something comes through here, or some bug or whatever, you know, I mean, that's not even enough to go back and plant reasonably sized pine trees in that space to replace them with in a staggered position that would allow the proper buffering that we're asking for, you know? So that, that's, that's where my big, that's the concern that I have, that I, that I think that we're just, everything is pushed to the exact, maximum, maximum, every inch, every tree's cut down, every inch of its impervious surface. And, um, and I just don't think that in a development of this, this caliber, that it shouldn't be buffered better, um, and we shouldn't be putting more consideration into the people who are making monumental investments in housing because of the cost of housing nowadays and the value they're paying for a product that is questionably going to maintain that value in the future. And then I don't want it to be that they're, they're hearing dumpsters banging, that they're looking at it, there's, you know, uh, there's literally parking lots that are pointing towards it, you know, and, uh, I just, I don't know how to get, uh, you know, it's not uncommon that everybody asks for every inch of every piece to be developed, but I think it's a mistake to allow a, a one mistake to allow one bush buffering when we had, the whole PUD had seventy acres to work with. So, now, we agreed to these stipulations and they were put there, but when we approved it, we didn't approve the site plan, we didn't approve the landscaping, we approved the concept of commercial buildings, and it needs to be at a higher standard. They've done an excellent job of creating great architecture, the look, the space, the community gathering, but that's for the other patrons coming here. That's not for longevity and privacy and isolation from the people making these investments. You're looking at the buildings, and then you've got patios and living space outside those buildings. These people are literally going to be within the width of this room, away from a commercial development, counting on the fact that one arborvitae touching another arborvitae survives forever. And I just, that's my struggle.
Do the plans indicate the distance on center of those arborvitae's? I could not find it.
And I think it's a misnomer to say that they're all arborvitae. We've got a pretty robust plant list that, that has about seventy-four trees and then dozens and dozens of shrubs. I think we've got more than a dozen different varieties of just trees themselves. So, there's a lot of variety in terms of the health of it.
I thought the plans referred to that, those two borders, as an arborvitae row and...
There is an arborvitae row adjacent to, to the playground. You're correct, but the, the overall buffer has an awful lot of horticulture variety.
I understand. I was referring to specifically the arborvitae row.
I don't know that our plan shows them, depicts a center. We can add that typically, they'd be thirty-six inches on center.
And how high?
I believe that we're specifying them either six or eight feet. I can't read that from here, but they come in at, you know, a good size. I think what's important from a landscape and from a buffering point of view and where this is a unique situation and the fact that it is a phase of a larger PUD, the PUD specifically and the PUD documents don't talk about and don't mandate any type of a, of a rear landscape setback. They certainly talk about building setbacks, but, but although the township ordinance may call for a twenty-five-foot perimeter buffer, the internal divisions between the phases throughout the PUD didn't consider that and don't have those as a condition of the PUD documents. And so, I don't think that, that, that's a condition that should be added at this point because it was never proposed, it was never discussed, and it was never agreed upon within the documents.
But there are some other conditions you're asking us to vary on.
Well, and in those cases, those are greater setbacks to give additional space. So, I, we're not asking to put more in, we're actually asking for fewer square feet than was permitted. We're asking for larger buffers or larger setbacks than were stipulated. And we are providing from an overall PUD point of view, we're doubling the, the ordinance requirement in terms of that opacity requirement. And where I understand Mr. Morocco's point that, hey, we can't count on those neighbors to maintain those buffers, that's why we've, we've doubled that buffer and we've put it on both halves.
Megan, you made a comment on the square footage of the buildings. In, in the square footage of, even though the number of buildings has reduced, the square footage of these three buildings exceed what was originally approved, but when you combine all the commercial buildings, it's less.
Correct.
So, you, you are more familiar with the terms of the permit conditions. You feel that meets...
The terms of the permit conditions did not specify square footage for uses.
But we were anticipating eighty-six thousand and we're getting roughly eighty or something.
Correct.
And you feel like that's not a change? Well, it's a change to the better, so it's a minor?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to elaborate on that.
It's a reduction, so that would be minor in nature.
Yeah. Okay. Joe, Belinda?
No.
You got anything?
Nope.
Jason, I got a couple for you. I just want to clarify, you indicate that the tapers on Walden were removed yet. The car doorman review indicates they are shown. I just...
There were a few comments in our letter that just basically pointed out some coordination that needs to get done with the, the plans that were done for the right away and for the adjacent phases. There's some conflicting line work for a few of them.
Okay.
So, they, all they need to do is just clean that up.
Okay.
It's not a, not a major issue.
You referenced the one-way drive by the daycare. I assume that you're talking about the southernmost access drive?
Correct.
And if, I don't know if it was you or Megan who suggested it, but possibly if it could be closed?
The, so, we didn't want that to be a, an entrance because of the proximity to the intersection. So, what they've done is they've, they've narrowed it, they've proposed it as an exit only, and then they're providing signage to indicate that it's an exit only. So, from a traffic standpoint, that is going to have much less conflict with, you know, traffic entering the site.
Okay. I thought I read that you had, still had a problem with it, but no, you're okay with it?
We're, we're okay with the exit only approach there.
And the parking islands, in the parking lot for the daycare, you made a comment about those.
Yeah, so, the, the eight spaces in the center of that parking lot there, what they've done on this iteration of the plan is they've created some striped islands to the north and south. A couple of our comments were just dealing with circulation, so that actually the screen we're looking at right now illustrates the fire truck maneuvering around the site, so we were encouraging the use of some, some end islands there, but ultimately, that would result in the loss of parking to take those any further than what they've shown here.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Pam?
Explain the, where all the semis are going to be loading and unloading for all this retail and restaurants.
So, again, with, with four-sided buildings, that does become a challenge. The way we've handled it and will handle it in this situation, have handled it in other buildings like this, is that the, the trucks will come in, they'll go up north and point north and block one of those lanes. It'll be controlled both within the operational agreements and within the leases, the time of deliveries and the length that they can be there. There is no truck wells or any overnight parking or long-term parking, so they'll be the type of deliveries that come in, unload and leave. There is not a designated loading zone, but again, that's, that's, you know, part of the operation of these four-sided buildings where we don't truly have a back of house. In terms of the childcare area, those won't have any large trucks, you know, the largest type, type of truck that would come there would be maybe like an Amazon-type truck. There's no extensive meal program, there's, there's light lunches and things like that, so there aren't any semis coming to there.
There are school buses.
No school buses, sir. So, it, it really would be the occasional, not occasional, but the trucks at service. The other good thing is that in terms of timing, we're working with different tenants and again, we don't have any signed leases, we don't have any tenants for these spaces until we have a better timeline on the, the buildings. But the, the ability to have retail and restaurant and some type of office allows us to mix it. If they were all restaurant or all retail, they'd be more conflicting, so that we think in such a small project, that diversity is going to give us different loading times.
We've had this discussion with other people and I haven't, I haven't seen it ever work correctly, where you've got all these food and beverage suppliers scheduling their deliveries. If they did do such a thing, if you could even pull that off, where, show me on there where they're going to be parked at, these semis are going to be parked at.
We would, we would anticipate one to come in and turn on that first well, that first drive aisle going north towards the easternmost dumpster and unload there and then continue out and up and around.
So, he would be blocking all those parking spots while he was unloading?
That's right.
And using his beer cart to get all the way to the very far building, all the way to the end? They're all going to, they're all going to traverse all, through all those parking spaces with their stuff?
Well, our, our, yes, our, the, the restaurants are anticipated to be on the eastern side and so, under your example of having, where would the beer guy go? He would go there and go right into those buildings.
But there's no way to do it with having a designated parking spot in any way without, because, I mean, you know, what, they block the people who are parked there?
Well, again, if, in terms of operational times, is, we would work with that on that.
Who, who is "we"? Who, who's the "we" that's going to work with them? I mean, are you owning all those restaurants yourself? Are you the owner of them all?
No. You know, ultimately, we'll be the landlord of, of all, all the buildings and we'll be, we'll be in charge of implementing, you know, the proper rules to, to make sure that all of our tenants have the proper amount of success and set them up for success.
So, you're not selling any of those pads?
No, we're not selling, nope, that is correct. It's, it's important to note too, right? So, you know, we, we like to think that, you know, we're good at what we do. At the end of the day, we're the little guy at the table, right? You have Polte, you have Meyer, and then there's, you know, our group who, quite frankly, didn't have a whole lot of say in this matter as it relates to the overall PUD. In, in projects similar to this, oftentimes, you'll see a drive-through component. We were told no. We wanted more GLA, we were told no. We, we were told no to a point where we felt like this is the best product that, that will be successful. And as it relates to, you know, the overall tendency of the building, it's our job to be successful, which means we're going to provide complementary retail restaurants that, that, that help feed off one another. We're not going to put two breakfast places in here, we're not going to put two dinner places in here. We're going to, we're going to provide the right blend and then implement, you know, delivery hours that, you know, will be well-received if, 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 you know, we have peak hours for one tenant, we're going to make sure that the other tenant that's receiving deliveries is not going to, you know, conflict with, with their peak hours and vice versa. There's enough room on si, on the site too, to, you know, ultimately accommodate the proper deliveries that will take place and, and so on and so forth, excuse me, so on and so forth. But as Jim mentioned, it's important that we acknowledge as the residents to the west, as we, as we go east, we're going to create a soft transition from a daycare or early learning center that, you know, we've got to be reminded of, there are kids that are going to be there. And, and, and I like to think that a lot of the residents in that community are going to be sending their children to, to that facility. So, you know, it's not a restaurant that's going next to the residential there, it's, it's a daycare. The garbage, you know, quite frankly, they, they don't, they don't generate a lot of garbage, no more than, you know, a typical office or, you know, once again, it's, it's children. They're not eating and bringing in, you know, food and restaurants for that portion of the development. So, there's a lot of things that I guess we just got to be sensitive to, that the reality of what's to take place here. And in a perfect world, we want to do, you know, a couple of restaurants, and as it relates to doors, we don't have any tenants committed for it because we don't have an approved plan. When we get an approved plan, we'd like to then implement, you know, door positions that our tenants will ultimately dictate, but we, we've designed a building that will obviously have the opportunity to activate the patios and we want our tenants to be successful by, by the utilization of those patios. So, thank you.
Do you guys have any more questions for the applicant? Do you want them to clarify anything?
Well, I would just say that the green belt and the parking lot interior are short trees and short what is required, and that should be, we should ask for the required number. And also, Megan made a point of the plan does not contain a statement that all diseased and damaged and dead, dead trees or dead materials will be replaced in accordance with standards. That should be included on the plan.
We can, we can certainly add that statement. That's our mistake for leaving that off, but that isn't a request of the township and we certainly can, can do that. In terms of the trees, again, we had talked about that we, both in the parking lot and in the front, that we, we've tried to balance the, the number of trees that are out front and in the parking lot with the areas of use. In terms of overall trees that are required for the site and trees that are planted or proposed to be planted on this site, we're actually providing more trees than are required. We're just, instead of perhaps in the middle of the parking lot, we're putting those over on the side buffer. But we're, we're exceeding the tree allowance, we're just putting them in other locations so that we can activate those other areas with some of the patios and plazas.
And in our letter, we noted that they're proposing bench seating, masonry stone, pillar, shrubs and perennials in keeping with the PUD overall and the Seshba rote overlay district. If they added five more trees to that front setback, some of those amenities would probably need to go away. There's just not, not, not enough room. And so, I think for the planning commission, as you're looking at it, it'd be a choice between the plaza area that's been created, especially in front of the mixed-use building and the restaurant, as opposed to whether there should be more street trees there.
Just a question on the traffic relating to the deliveries. If your plan doesn't work, the scheduling plan, and, you know, what, what that means is, I'm not sure, but a conflict between parking and trucks and pedestrians and whatnot, who resolves that conflict if it becomes a conflict? And does the township have to get involved in resolving any issues in the parking lot related to traffic? Trucks are there, don't leave, pedestrians or can't get to their cars, you know, this kind of stuff?
Yeah, if, if there was to be an ongoing situation to occur of such, I think, you know, we as the landlords would ultimately get our tenants to, to collaborate collectively and figure out a solution that would work best for everybody. You know, it's, I'm not, you know, it's, I'm not going to say that it couldn't happen, but once again, you know, it's, it's up to the retailers to provide an offering, an experience that wants their customers to come back and patron, of course, this project and development or their retail establishment. So, we as the landlords want to also assist in that process, so we're going to do whatever it takes to make sure that that happens. And, and, you know, if I may add, we're, we're developing this with the intent of keeping this, you know, forever, God willing, and, you know, we're not looking to develop this and flip, and, and sell it and, and make a profit. So, we're, we're here to be part of the community and excited to, to do it. And if we have to take a little more of a hands-on approach, we will.
Megan, where are we sitting with the parking on this? Can they give up some parking to fix some of these problems?
They do exceed the required parking. So, if you'll look on page four of our letter, in terms of the required parking for the restaurant retail, restaurant, retail and office, it's a hundred and twenty-five are required and they're providing a hundred and forty-one. And then, for the daycare, they're required thirty-five, they're, they've provided forty-two. Also, we should note that the number of parking places required by the PUD plan is a hundred and seventy-nine spaces for the final phase of that development, which, when you add that, when you add up a hundred and forty-one and forty-two, you get a hundred and eighty-three. So, by the ordinance, there's a lot of wiggle room by the parking plan that was approved as part of the final PUD. There's four spaces.
Access.
The, the four spaces in excess.
And I know in our parking standards and shared use and different hours of operation, and we've done shared parking, that we've allowed developments to deviate from that parking to allow more green space. Does that make sense in this situation? So, daycare parking is certainly going to be different than bar parking, but the daycare's not by the restaurant, it's by the office building, which again, wouldn't typically be open when the, I'm assuming these are going to be a restaurant-bar type situation more than just open till three PM and close, I would think, so, but I don't know that. It doesn't say.
To your point, planning commissioner Morocco, yes, there could be a shared parking scenario and I imagine all of these uses would have some dynamicism in between, in terms of, in terms of users, customers, staff. However, one of the things that we pointed out in our letter and I think that the engineer has pointed out as well, is the pedestrian connections, especially linking to the daycare, are limited. Somebody would have to, especially if they're coming from the single-family residential on the top at the north, they would have to come, if they're coming from Bradford Lane, they have to come all the way down the sidewalk, all the way down to Walden Road, and then they need a crosswalk there and, to have a crosswalk. In pre-application meetings with the applicant, we've talked about whether there could be a pathway down the other side, a pathway that was more direct from the, from the detached single-family, or if there was a way to have a pathway that also came at, at a closer point when you're heading south, if you're thinking of, let's say I, you know, somebody lives there and they're taking their kids to daycare and they choose to walk. So, it, to answer your question, if there was going to be some shared parking spaces in between the daycare and the mixed-use building and restaurant parking pool, we would want to be assured that there are really good pedestrian connections. we would want to be assured that there are really good pedestrian connections between that and the daycare to facilitate either staff or, um, customers of the daycare, um, to be able to walk to that area safely.
Okay.
We, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
We, we looked at that. Obviously pedestrian safety, safety, safety around the school is paramount. We do have sidewalks, as you can see, that go all the way around the site. So if I'm walking down Walden Center Drive, if I'm going across Bradford, if I'm coming down from Bradford, there's sidewalks all the way around. What we didn't want to do is encourage people with good traffic safety to cross mid-block, much less children. And so we did look at an opportunity to put a crosswalk, say on the, the north side or behind the retail, that would cross over. What that would really cause is for a family to cross mid-block or where there's not going to be a stop sign. It would also then kind of empty them out into a parking lot and kind of have the, the family or the kid to have to cut through the parking lot. So what we, we chose instead is to direct that sidewalk to come all the way down the west side of the building. It's only about forty-five feet or so, uh, come down to the building, cross it a crosswalk. I do agree that we have not shown and we will show a crosswalk across the safety path at Walden. So, if I'm at the school and I want to go, uh, to lunch, I'll, I'll come down to the safety path, which is right by the front door. I'll cr- I'll cross at the, at the typical spot as opposed to mid-block. And then I'll either go into the front door, into the back door of that retail. It'll also take me real safely all the way over to the Meyer Market. So, we, we have looked at that, but we, we're confident or feel confident that this is really a safest way for pedestrians to move around.
Okay, I got one question. You can tell we're getting down to the end here.
Yes.
Yeah. Has there been any thought that the residence, residential units would be using the parking facilities in here for their own use?
It, it's-
A third vehicle or storing a, you know, a trailer or, you know, just, or just a, you know, the opposite. Traffic, pedestrian traffic leaving for whatever reason, this facility and getting into the neighborhoods to do no good.
Well, uh, we certainly would not encourage permit and we would police anybody, uh, you know, parking overnight or putting a trailer or anything else like that out. You know, we, we're, we're not going to encourage that and just like any other, you know, facility within our township would it. In terms of connectivity and pedestrians, you know, obviously, um, no one wants to invite trouble and we don't think that we have. On the other hand, we deliberately have connected sidewalks and connected roads with the hope that people who live in the neighborhoods are going to walk or ride their bikes as opposed to, um, uh, you know, driving everywhere. And, and that's kind of the neat part about this is we're going to encourage people to be out and as opposed to in their cars. I, I think we're all aware that we deliberately did not connect a road going from the single-family into this portion of it, uh, simply because we didn't want to have a lot of high school cut-through traffic. But there will be, uh, sidewalks and paths that connect them. So the goal is, is to have uh, connectivity throughout the neighborhood and in, you know, into the adjacent neighborhoods. And, um, you know, the good news is, is we live in a, a really safe community and well-pleased neighborhood. And I'm of the belief, the more, uh, eyes on the street and the more neighbors that we have, the safer the areas become.
Anybody else comment?
Some of the same issues.
So, first, personally, my opinion, I, you, I think you've got, got a very nice project here. Um, I think it has some issues that need tweaking. So for, for purposes of clarity, um, I'd just like to summarize those if I may. Um, and Megan and other commission members, please let me know if I missed something. So you want brick on all the, the gables of, of the roofs. Uh, issues of the trash dumpsters, pu- dumpsters, can they possibly be moved? Um, a minor comment that was made about the need to combine the parcels, I'm sure, sure that can be done. Uh, the setback issues is, is an issue. Um, the doors, which it sounds like you can solve that. Um, I assume that you can indicate the crosswalk connections. You can indicate the width of the sidewalks. You can include statements that all about all the diseased trees being replaced. Um, the string and bollard lights on the lighting plan and colors, uh, for the exterior building materials. There's the issue of the loading zone. Uh, my first opinion on that is, I, is I recognize the problem. But my thought on that, it's just my opinion, is that that's probably a problem that's created by a four-sided building and yeah, where are you going to put it? You are asking for a couple of variances on, on parking lot, trees and, uh, tree, the street trees. Building, um, mounted lights, um, can you be consistent with the, I believe they're called, all the decorating lighting? Need to indicate that, um, the color coordinated temperatures of all lighting is thirty-five hundred Kelvin. Reduce the pole lighting to eighteen feet. And remove you, trees from the utility easements. Did I get everything? Anybody got anything else?
Buffering.
Buffering. So, um, I'd like to ask if you think you can do some tweaking and, uh, come back?
I, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have, just for point of clarification, so that when we come back, we get it right. Most of those, um, I know what you mean or I've read them and, and we, we can address them. I, I starred four of them just so I understand maybe a little direction. In terms of setback issues, we've talked about those. I feel as though they have merit in our proposal and, and again, in most cases, we've ex- we've exceeded, we've, we've gotten bigger setbacks than the PUD originally expected. When you say we have setback issues, could you give us some direction? Is there, and I, I realize we're not voting here, but, um, is, is the, is the commission asking us to redesign it and, and move those or do those setbacks, uh, changes seem reasonable?
I don't have any issues with the front setbacks. It works with the design. You know, my, I, my issues are with the buffer, is more with the buffering and the, and the pedestrian traffic. So I personally, don't have any issues myself with how the front of the building is designed and why you did it to create those patios and, and spaces that, that, now whether or not it's bigger than it should have been, which offsets reasons why we don't have truck, you know, ample parking or, or, you know, that's different. But as far as if we're talking about the setback, me giving you direction, it's just one commissioner. I'm, the front setbacks and the stuff you're asking for, I think, are reasonable to what the design standard is, personally.
I appreciate that. Thank you. That, that's helpful.
They're saying, but just-
How about the, the west side, um, around the daycare where they're so narrow? I was including that in that statement.
That, to me, the buffering and, and, uh, and the beautification of it is part of that, but the, the setback is not the issue as far as, as much as in my opinion, making it look nicer from that and not having that be the utilitarian end because it is visible from the road. And, uh, it's the, the, if it's utilitarian, I'd like, I would like to see more buffering, but I don't think it's the set, it's not the setback that's the problem to me. Just,
Let, let me call, let, let-
You know, I guess it can, it's two things that combines, but you can have a reduced or exaggerated setback and still have buffer. You know, that's, I think, I look at those as two separate, um, issues.
And they're, and they're outlined separately, at least in, in the Carlisle review. So I, I understand what you're, what you're saying with those.
Yeah. I don't want to design it for you, but could you work with Bulte to put another row of?
I don't want to go, you can't, you don't want to go down that road.
No.
That's a different development.
Just need more green buffering on their side, on their site.
I mean, can you consider reducing a couple of parking spaces and see if that-
We'll, I understand the objective and we'll look at, you know, different alternatives that hopefully can get us there. I understand the, the points.
Because in the rear, Jim, we're, I mean, we're in the, the dumpsters in the fifteen-foot side yard setback. So I mean, we're literally, you know, within two or three feet from the property line with that dumpster enclosure in the back northeast corner. You know, and that's why I was asking about parking. Could we eliminate some parking? Could we, you know, move the, instead of having the traffic islands at the end and all that parking go to the end, could we push the exit a little further back against the buffering and then just have the three rows go up to the end, you know, and that would add another couple, four spaces to every one of the three rows, you know, and I mean, you're, I'm just trying, I'm not going to design it for you, but I do want to try to get to a, a, a better-
I understand that. It's, it's tough because the daycare, um, most of the day, those spots will be empty, but it's that drop-off and pickup, you know, where, where those spots are needed and from an operations point of view. But I understand what you're saying. The, the good part about the daycare, um, and it might be a little bit different from, as it relates to dumpster, but the hours of operation of the daycare are essentially when everybody's working, right? So, so weekends it's closed, nights it's closed. So, so it's going to be a quiet neighbor, uh, particularly for the, the neighbors who work. The other part of an overall PUD really as it relates to any of the components here, right? Is it's, it's a unique thing. Oh, yes, it's a phase. Yes, it's a separate developer or owner. But, but it's a PUD that has been very public and, and, you know, every single town homeowner, every single single-family owner, every single person who'll be up by a detached condo is very, very aware of, of the overall PUD. And so people who will be buying those or pricing those, those adjacent units, um, are very aware of the fact that it's up against commercial, you know, not unlike if someone was to buy down in the village and on Buffalo Street, it's not a surprise uh, that, uh, that they're buying next to commercial, uh, as opposed to someone who bought there and twenty years later, someone built something next to it. But I understand that the task and we'll, we'll take a look at that from a design point of view. Mr. Chairman, just two other, three other quick things. The buffering, um, we covered that. The landscape trees, again, we, and maybe some of this will be picked up in the buffering and, and taking a closer look at that. But, um, again, as, as Megan had pointed out, uh, we made choices in terms of the location of the trees. We feel as though we've still met that.
I understand.
I recognize that, but we would hope that, you know, I'd rather give you a plaza up front and a tree in the back than trying to put too many trees in the front. And that, that was our intent. Not to short-change the number of trees, but maybe play with the positions. And then the last thing is, is just in terms of if anybody has ideas, again, we're the designers, but with that loading zone, we recognize that it is, um, a circumstance that we're going to have to deal with, but is dealt with in other parts of our community. Frank and his team, you know, as the owners and they've got other, uh, similar buildings, uh, that they work with. And it really is kind of one of those manage it well, manage it closely and adjust because we have to remember that these tenants will change over time as well. And so if we institute something that says, hey, this is going to work for that tenant, well, in ten years, that tenant may change to something else. And so it, it's going to have just ongoing management. Mr. Sugar, to answer your question, I don't, I don't foresee a, a situation at which it would ever become the township's problem. Obviously, ultimately, if, if things just break down, the township gets involved, but it really would be up to the developer and out, up to the landlord to manage those tenants and those expectations.
Can I ask Jason a question? So, I don't know what page I'm looking at that shows it with the red lines again, but, um, when you pull in that boulevard, that driveway between the commercial and the daycare center, you're gonna, and, or not, I'm sorry, in the other, the other, uh, the other road, closer to Myers. When you turn into behind that retail and then you're going to make that sharp right into the first row of parking and then you're going to, you know, that's where you're going to be on, now say that you're going to block those twenty spots, the ten on the right, the ten on the left, and you're going to be parked there unloading. Then you have to leave and drive around the back and you've got to get through that narrow traffic island break where the crosswalk is to get back on the main, you know, on the main road coming out. Has anybody put the scale to that for semi movement? I mean, not fire truck, but, but where they're proposing to do it, and I'm not saying it, it looks very hard to manipulate a, a truck with a fifty-two foot trailer that's going to make that left and then the quick right into the first parking row and then around the traffic islands and then around the other traffic island that's really just there for a sidewalk. And then either go right or left. It, it, it looks, um, really like they're going to be running their tires over the traffic islands and they're going to be tearing up some stuff. Uh, because not everyone today is, can drive to the standard that we would all like.
Right. Um, Erin McBacken with Stonefield Engineering. Um, we did provide a fire truck turning sheet. I know one of the comments was to also provide for loading and trash delivery truck turning. Um, if you put up the site plan again, you will notice that at that eastern trash enclosure, there's a really large radii on that curb island. And then again, when you exit by the western trash enclosure, there's a larger radii at that driveway and that was why we positioned the trash enclosures like that. And it does also accommodate the loading trucks, whereas those internal lanes, those landscape islands have really small radiis. So trucks wouldn't be traversing in those middle lanes, but that outer lane that was noted for loading, you know, is provided with larger radii and we'll provide truck turning analysis for that.
If Brian brings it up, I'll just point out my concern, but I agree with the dump, with the garbage trucks. I don't think you're going to have the issue that we're talking about.
So the easternmost landscape island at the northeast, it's a really large radii.
This is where I'm concerned about is them coming in here, making this maneuver with a semi.
Right.
Parking this, okay, maybe without clipping this. Here it gets a little trickier because this is really narrow. Trying to get a semi out of here and then back into here.
And we can modify those radius and-
They wouldn't need to do all that if we had another loading zone area or they could block the front or, you know what I mean? We're, we're, that's a lot of cars and a lot of traffic islands and a lot of grass and landscaping that's in, at, at risk of an unco- of a driver with a fifty-two foot trailer who doesn't know exactly, and I know you can, you can be wishful about who the driver is and what the suppliers are and all that, but you can't control it. You can just hope for the best.
Right. And another thing that we've seen before on other projects and especially with something up, you know, we want to give an appealing site here. You know, a fifty-foot by twenty-foot yellow striping isn't beautiful to look at all day when it's sitting there empty. So, something that can help with loading would be signage, you know, talking about tenants with different hours. Maybe that eastern row of parking, no parking in the morning and that's dedicated to loading and vice versa for other areas of the site with signage to kind of help with that.
I would, if, if that's your plan, I'd like to see the, the, I'd like to see the truck movement because that's a lot different than a fire truck that doesn't articulate and a garbage truck, which is even smaller. And not only to make sure, because there's going to be a lot of cars and swinging that you don't get jammed in there, but we also want to make sure what you do plant stays pristine and that we're, you know, that, that, I just want to see that that works.
Yeah, we'll add a truck turning analysis for each tenant just to confirm.
Well, in a manner of where you're, you're saying you're going to, you know, move those, you're going to make it work. You know what I mean? Just to show that, that they're not going to be cutting through that high radius, um, island and, you know, how they like to jump curbs and stuff. And, um, there's a sidewalk they got to traverse as they're leaving. That's the biggest one is the exit onto the service road leaving.
Yeah, we'll look at other options and paths to, to provide something that's a little more safe.
One, one other item is, you know, I would say rarely do we ever have a fifty-plus foot delivery truck on any of our existing sites. Most of the users that we deal with, it's not, you know, we're not a grocer, we're not, we're not a big stock inventory type, type retail offering. So, you know, what, what would you say is the average-sized truck of the delivery for some of our existing shopping centers? Yeah, I would say the average truck is-
That'd be a straight truck.
Right.
But, um, I'm, I'm-
So I guess, I guess your, your situation-
You know, we're just trying to prepare for all scenarios.
No, of course.
And tenants. So that's all. I just want to see that it works.
Our restaurant, excuse me, our restaurant-type user wouldn't have a fifty-plus foot delivery truck. It just, it's not-
Would you be limiting them access to it with no semis? And then if they happen to have something come on a semi, there would be an alternative plan to protect your islands? You know?
I mean, I mean, once again, if, if, you know, if our tenants have deliveries and they're accepting fifty-plus, fifty, fifty-foot plus trucks and they happen to be destroying our property, you know, we will not tolerate that. No different than you would want that, you know, to take place at your home. So, there's, there's, there's an element of, of that as well.
Why don't we study it? I, I appreciate it. But maybe one alternative for those large trucks is just to pull up between the retail and daycare. We can, you know, put signage and, and temporary offloading there and just continue up and around the loop and never get into the parking lot. But let's, let's look at those different scenarios.
I would feel better with something possibly like that or at least- I would feel better with something possibly like that or at least show that it works. Because you're going to have a lot of, uh, there's a lot of vehicular and, and the pedestrian traffic cuts through the, you know, through there too. So that's, that's my concern with that.
So it sounds like, uh, you're going to tweak it and come back to us. So with that, I look for a motion to table.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe, you know, no, no tabling to a specific time or whatever.
Postponement is open ended.
Okay, so we're not.
Do a postponement, yes.
Okay. I get those confused. Postpone them.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, um, for PC file 2024-012, petitioner Verus Development Group, requesting final site plan approval for part of Phase Three of Walden Village Two Plan Unit Development consisting of Restaurants, Retail and Childcare Academy, um, be postponed to, um, to, um, add further detail, taking into consideration the comments of the consultants, the, um, uh, brick facade on the daycare center, revisit the dumpster locations and their appropriateness, um, the, uh, uh, more detail on the footprint, um, egress and, uh, egress of the building themselves, crosswalk details, the guarantee, um, for the tree and vegetation preservation, um, increasing the buffering to the residential homes, denoting or proving that loading zones, um, would work functionally well with the development, addressing the, uh, lighting height and styles to be, uh, compatible with the consultant's reports. And again, uh, the fire department's report and the consultant engineers' comments along with the comments of the commission at tonight's meeting.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next item on the elects, on the, um, agenda is election of officers. It was suggested that we defer until we have a full commission, but, uh, I'll leave that up to everybody. I think, um, I've started some things as chairman that I'd like to continue. So I'm willing to remain hopefully as chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I originally proposed that you take the seat as chair. This is about a year ago. And, uh, appreciate the work that you've been doing. I guess I shouldn't be making these speeches out there. So I would just nominate you to continue on as chair for one more session or whatever the wording should be that makes that happen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Vice Chair.
You be the chair.
Okay.
Congrats.
Joe?
Pardon me?
You, will you accept the nomination of Vice Chair? I nominate Joe.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Belinda?
I'd like to nominate Belinda Billings as the, um, secretary to retain that position.
All second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Everybody walks out with a gun.
Next item, PC file 2024-007, petitioner Dennis Miller, Express Car Wash Concepts. This is requesting preliminary plan unit development review of a new car wash near the corner of Sashaba and Mayby Road on the two access drives, one off of Mayby and one off of Sashaba that lead back to the Kroger Shopping Center. As, as, uh, as I did with, uh, or attempted to do with, uh, the previous app, then I, I'd like to outline a discussion sequence. I'll ask Megan to summarize the changes made since the app last presentation. Give the public an opportunity to speak. It's not a public hearing, but we usually give them the opportunity to speak in, uh, on every agenda item. And then I think the, um, next step for us will be to discuss the appropriateness of this use for this location. And then if we determine in fact that it is appropriate, we will continue on with more detailed discussions regarding the site plan. If that's okay to everybody, then I would ask Megan to, um, summarize the changes and any other comments she wishes to make.
I'm sure the planning commissioners remember this was before you on November 14th, 2024, where you asked, where you post, made a motion to postpone to give the applicant, um, time to address comments at that time. So these are the changes that they've made in between the plan that you looked at then and the plan for you tonight. The sidewalk along the Kroger access drive is proposed to be moved to the edge of the road. Before there was a buffer between that and the road, um, and a knee wall with shrubs is proposed between the sidewalk and the parking lot. That configuration is a little different. The sidewalk along the Kroger access drive is proposed to extend the width of the parcel, um, of the proposed park and connect with the pathway that exists to the west of the site. In addition, there are pedestrian paths proposed in the park and a future connection option is shown along the eastern border. In the proposed park, there are bicycle parking, picnic areas, benches and, and, and masonry, um, seating areas shown. There are also trees proposed on the western side of the Mayby access road, nearing those previously proposed on the eastern side of the street in terms of location, type and spacing. So that design with the trees would look like, um, a, a landscape street. And also the loading area has been moved from the west of the proposed driveway connecting to the Kroger access drive to adjacent to the car wash building. You had expressed concern, um, that that loading space was fairly far away from the building, so they've moved it adjacent to. So now that loading space, somebody could come out and directly get on the sidewalk and go into the building.
Okay. Jason, you got anything you want to add?
No, the, the board comments are really for the next phase. There was nothing layout wise that we had to report.
Thank you. Next, I'll give the, um, audience any opportunity if anybody out there wants to say anything about this request.
Zach Rowley with Planet Oil, Change of Clarkston, located 6380 on Sashaba. Was here before you guys in November, um, when this was originally brought. You know, again, we just believe that it's not really appropriate for, uh, you know, uh, the use at this site, mainly because like we discussed last time and Mr. Suter, you know, really kind of went into detail, is, is this needed there? The board recently went forward with, uh, the Mr. Car Wash site at the old, um, big boy facility that hasn't even begun construction yet, you know, and is it really an appropriate time, uh, to pursue additional car washes when car washes, um, have already been approved, not even begun to move forward to see whether or not that would address, you know, any potential need of the community and whether or not in that, in a space that we're really trying to derive more foot traffic and things in, that we need to move or adjust rules to allow something to be put in there that could be better used for other Roma activities. I'm, I'm not really sure, uh, at this stage, since it's a preliminary, almost a question, if we can discuss it again later, what the board is reviewing at this, um, but, you know, as, as members of the community for a long time at our existing facility down the road, it seems like there's a lot of other potential areas where if there is a need in the remainder of the community for this, that a car wash could be considered, but to put one directly on top of another one doesn't seem to benefit the community or warrant discussing changing rules around in use, even if it does come with a small park and a Kroger parking lot as a part of that development. So we appreciate your time.
Anybody else? Anybody online want to say anything? Right. All right. Next, um, so as I said, I think that the, um, PC needs to determine if this proposed use, this plan does or does not meet all the conditions contained in Section 9.02B3.
African, applicant should be offered the application.
So, um, I, so, yeah, so I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to address that issue and.
Hello, my name is Anthony Shalal. I'm an attorney, I'm the attorney on behalf of the applicant. And with me is Jacob, who's engineer on behalf of the applicant as well. Thank you for your time. I know it's getting kind of late, so we'll try to keep it short and sweet for you guys. Our goal here is simply to enhance the Regency Independence, uh, Center with an additional convenient amenity for independent township residents. I mean, it's, it's essentially, we're treating this as a one shop stop for the greater shopping center, uh, that we have there. The area, the, the center already includes grocery shopping, beauty and wellness establishments, carryout restaurants and other service establishments. And so it's, it's, the, the development will add value, uh, to residents who are already servicing the center. The project can, the project can benefit, certainly benefit both the township and its residents. When we revised our plans, we took your recommendations into account and we were really thinking about the Opportunities 2030 Master Plan and how the Sashaba Corridor site is the, uh, economic core and economic engine of Independence Township. And we believe this development adds to that economic and, economic and, economic core and economic engine. Some of the updates and improvements, uh, to our last set of, uh, our last set of plans, uh, include incorporating recommendations in the Plenary PUD Review from you, from, from this commission, including in the park especially, bike racks, bench seating. We included elements from the Independence Township's Opportunities 2030 Master Plan and the Town Center Design Guidelines. We also did a deeper search and incorporated the Michigan Complete Streets Initiative, which encourages consideration of all street users for pedestrians, cyclists, motor, motor vehicleists. And, um, we also focused on the adjacent lot and made concrete plans to benefit the public. The public benefit includes, for the, for the, for the park includes three masonry fixtures, nearly 800 feet of new sidewalk for bicyclists and for pedestrians. And that will, that will connect the existing sidewalks and make the plaza more pedestrian friendly and accessible. We're happy to, to or prepared to address each of the Plenary PUD Review comments in, in turn or to first open up the floor to specific questions if that is your preference.
Thank you.
Yes.
Comments from the commission?
I'd like to make note that we received a letter from James L. Phil Fitzpatrick on this particular case and that that's been submitted to all of the, uh, Planning Commission members, uh, and, uh, the letter in general basically is in opposition of the request for the record. I guess I'll start. I wasn't here at the last meeting. I watched it. My concerns are a couple, one of them being the, um, this high volume, um, motor vehicle use being put inside a, a town center area that we're trying to promote, um, pedestrian uses. And my concern is that, um, by utilizing these two part, this, these parcels, it limits us the ability to have other uses that are more compatible, that would provide, make more sense for pedestrian traffic and, and, and shared uses, you know? If it had access to it directly to a main road, I would look at it differently if it was outside of this, outside of this PUD. I think that the, the access to it and the volume of traffic, uh, and it's a constant flow of traffic. If it's busy is, uh, going to be a hindrance to the, to, to the project more than a benefit. I don't, if we didn't have the same use right down the street, that would also be a different, uh, the location and the need to be able to modify and provide a PUD, I think that the township needs, there needs to be proof that there's a benefit that could not be, uh, provided without making these, um, you know, letting it be a PUD and making these concessions. And personally, I don't think that this is a need, um, is a need of the township to justify, um, changing the character of the PUD and its intent when we designed it to have, um, other less invasive uses that would prevent, would provide and encourage more, um, pedestrian and crossover traffic to business to business. So that's, as the newcomer, uh, that's where I'm struggling, um, with it. Is it more of its proximity and its need to use the roads that we had intended to be less traveled and less busy, um, to accommodate our goals and objectives of having it be a town center, um, area.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, I, um, after working on the Opportunities 2035 for a while and, uh, looking at zoning and looking at where the township wants to be with this area, you know, I continue to say, or, you know, that this is not the area that the township has designated as to, um, uh, allow for this type of business to be, you know, in there. It's not in the master plan. It's not in the zoning. It's in violation of the zoning. And all those are pointing to how the township expressed by the building department, the consultants, want to go in terms of the use. Given that, there is an opportunity to change and I understand that, the, the use to make it so that zoning laws don't apply and that's the PUD and that's what's being applied for, which in a sense that's throw out the zoning and let's start over with this piece of property and develop it in another way other than was intended. And, um, I'm not sure that the, um, the request for this PUD meets that bar of the benefits to make this change. In effect, it's not changing the zoning ordinance, but, you know, naturally it's not changing the zoning ordinance, but in effect it is. You know, it's saying throw out zoning and let's do it this way. I don't understand the benefits that, uh, that I know what you're, what you're suggesting is that the park is a benefit and all that, but I've talked to people. I, I shop at that shopping center. I, I get my haircut in that shopping center. I, you know, walk around there. I take my wife there occasionally, very occasionally. And the people I've talked to see no benefit to the township whatsoever in developing that land for that use. So that's essentially, you know, the, the information that I have, that I've gathered just in talking to people. And I don't see the benefit. The park is of no, no benefit to, to the township in terms of meeting an unmet need. It just isn't. There's, our Parks Department doesn't see any use in it. Residents that I've talked to see no use in it in terms of value. So I'm not prepared to even say that a PUD should be considered for this because the bar has not been met. That's why it should be a PUD and throw out the zoning. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you. I would, I would like to say that, that the last time we heard this, I did raise the issue. I don't know if I raised it, was the first one, but I raised it, expressed my concern over, is this what we want in the, in the Sashaba Town Center Corridor? And, um, in spite of the applicant's valiant efforts to try and improve the, uh, site plan. I have to say after thinking about this hard in that time, that I, I still feel that, uh, a use like this that strictly caters to motor vehicles will, will create additional traffic on those two access drives and will result in an unreasonable increase in the need for burden upon public services, facilities and utilities in relationship to use or uses otherwise permitted by this ordinance. It will place an unreasonable burden upon the subject and or surrounding land and our property owners and occupants. Comment number one of Fire Marshal's review letter of January 2nd of this year is a clear indication that the proposed development shall be inconsistent with the public health, safety and welfare of the township. public health, safety, and welfare of the township and will result in an unreasonable negative impact upon surrounding properties. That comment addresses his concern that the traffic congestion on these access drives could most likely restrict the ability for emergency vehicles to get in and out. So I have serious, I still have serious questions. You got anything?
I would just say that I believe the proposed use would increase the need or the burden for public services, and it would also result in an unreasonable negative economic impact on surrounding properties.
Thank you.
May I address the concerns? So Jacob will address the unreasonable impact on public services and utilities. The fire safety, Jacob spoke with the Fire Marshal, and specifically, the concern was the vehicle congestion or volume on the maybe road access drive. We don't anticipate this to be a problem, particularly because traffic will go through the curb cut on Sashaba Road Access mainly. We see it to be about an 80% to 20% volume, 80% on Sashaba Road Access Drive and 20% on maybe road access drive. On average, the development will service up to 70 vehicles during the daily peak hour. Very, go ahead. Very conservative estimates assume that at least 75% of these vehicles will already be in the shopping center for other goods and/or services. As such, at the busiest hour of the day, the car wash will only add to 17 to 18 additional cars in the plaza.
That comes from the ITE Traffic Design Manual for Peak Hour, designed for a car wash, suggests a generated trips of 70 vehicles at peak hour. And then they also have a factor that they use when calculating traffic generation for how much of that is pass-by traffic, how much of that is newly created trips being brought into the area. Car washes are the highest factor of pass-by traffic, it's an impulse purchase for people that are already on those roads in those areas. It's not someone leaving their home saying, "I'm gonna go get a car wash, that is my reason for going out right now." So with that factor, it's the highest amount, 75%, and even that's a relatively conservative amount of that traffic is not going to be newly generated on those roadways. I spoke with Greg Brandt, the Fire Marshal, and kind of talked through some of these with him, and his main concern was that intersection of the two service roads, because the fire building is directly south there. He said that they use the maybe access drive as their intended route to reach the Kroger parking lot, and just due to the nature of the pre-existing drive, how thin that maybe road is, and the existing landscaping in the Sashaba Kroger Drive, it's a bit of a tight fit there for their trucks. And he just wanted confirmation that we weren't going to be clogging up that intersection with a great amount of new cars that we're going to be leaving there. However, with that amount, it's only 17 to 18, and that is the peak hour of the day. And then also, throw on top of that, that is our secondary access and exit point for our site. We would anticipate a majority leaving out the north side of that, so they wouldn't be on that, maybe sitting on blocking up that maybe road intersection at all. We believe that we are not impacting negatively any safety or volume impacts on those drives, because the car wash is generally going to be the least impact for new traffic volume of any use you're possibly going to build there.
The Fire Trucks, the Fire Marshal explained that the Fire Trucks use the maybe road access drive to get to service that area, and that was his general concern for his report. And what we believe is, well, it will be free, that area will be free from vehicle congestion most of the, if not all, the time, mostly because only 5% of the time will there be even six to eight stacked vehicles in line to get a car wash. So, and it can hold to 22 in line at a time, 24 if you want to go that high. But in reality, the chance of a congestion there is very minimal, very small, very negligible in terms of how quickly cars go through the tunnel, which takes two and a half, max three minutes to get there, get in line, and get out. So the congestion is based on, our experience is minimal. Regarding the use as near another car wash, we believe that these are, our car wash is distinct in the sense that we're servicing people who are already coming to a center that is high-volume for Kroger, wellness, carryout, things like that. I don't think we're really going to be taking much customers from that car wash as we are going to be servicing, again, like I said, we're a one-stop shop for the entire, for that area, for those residents. So while sure we are a mile away from an existing car wash, our car wash is different in who it services and where it services. So I think that makes a big difference in your analysis. So you want to speak on the...
I can speak to the park as well. We just meet with the Parks Direct Department and discuss with them what options they viewed as beneficial for that park area. They did agree with us that generally, a structure of recreational use was just not a good fit for that area, just due to its size and shape, and the, we wanted to avoid creating a new traffic burden for the surrounding Kroger lot and generally unable to accommodate new parking on that area. So one thing that we did point out as kind of the main benefit of this park area was that there are a lot of surrounding restaurants. You've got an ice cream place in the north, you've got Wendy's right to the south, you've got Tim Hortons. There's no outdoor seating anywhere in this pedestrian area. We made that the focus of our park design. There's seating wall benches all around the place, there's picnic tables, there's benches along that pond. It's the primary new benefit that is not present, that could be useful for all these surrounding businesses.
And added to that, there's, because there's carryout restaurants in the shopping center, and because Cold Stone is going to be on the end cap there, we think it's a great location for a seating area to permit people who are having, getting carryout, who are waiting for their kids to leave methanazium, to go and hang out and relax in the park, and to, you know, grab a bite of some ice cream and go enjoy it in the park. And by adding, by connecting, by with the connectivity and walkability of the existing sidewalks with the new, almost 800 feet of new sidewalks, we're adding to your vision of making this a more walkable and pedestrian-friendly area. Do you want to address the burden and impact on public services?
Yeah, so generally, in terms of public services, you're talking like fire out, response, emergency vehicle response time, yeah, we, based on the numbers that we talked about and the conversation we had with Greg Brandt, we determined that we were able to, much decreases worry level about this, we feel, and we don't believe that there'd be any significant increase on public services or safety for the area. And as to the effect of constructing another wash so close to another, I mean, Express has about 100 washes around the Midwest, this is an issue we, a concern we see come up just about every time. We wouldn't pursue this site if we didn't think it was a viable and beneficial location with the amount of nearby competition.
Thank you. Commission members?
I also, I'm sorry to interrupt, I actually have some rendering for the park. It's not like an official rendering, something that I just thought maybe you guys could get your eyes on and see, you know, I'd provide a copy to you guys?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'll comment, and a very nice park. If, I'm not as concerned about another car wash being as close to this car wash, that's not what my decision's based upon, my decision's based upon being part of the original PUD going there, the town center area being created and the vision being created, and the high-volume traffic being incompatible with what we had proposed to go there. It's not a competition thing, like we had a drugstore on every corner in the township, you know, and that's just how it is, you know? I don't, that's not, that's not even relevant to me. If you're a good business, you'll survive, you know, whether you're down the street or across the street. But I've been around for a couple decades, that was nothing there, Sashaba was a single-lane road. When I got involved, we had a, you know, we have a vision, and I think that the incompatibility of this high-volume of traffic is, it's kind of a catch-22. You're providing a place for pedestrian traffics, but we're providing a use that would make pedestrian traffic less desirable because of a high-volume automotive use. So that's where I'm struggling with it. If you had direct access to maybe road, my concern would not be the same, you know? If it wasn't inside our plaza, and that's, that's the hurdle that I can't seem to get over, is that. I think the park idea is probably one that would be, that would be okay if it was there, but the volume of traffic in the township and the, and I think that the limitations of having, that if we were to do this, my concern because of its incompatibility would be that it would then limit other uses of being able to conform with the, with what we had envisioned the town center area being, you know, if that makes sense. So if we, with the lack of outdoor seating, with the lack of patios, with the lack of restaurants and things in that plaza, this would even make it harder for us to achieve the goal that I think we had, was our objective in the first place, and that's, that's the basis for my disapproval of it, is that in itself, not, clearly not the competitive part of it, that's not, that's not relevant to me.
Okay.
You know, but that's just my, where I'm stuck with.
Thank you.
Well, if I can address this to the appropriateness of it, it kind of aligns with the corridor's economic purpose, right? A car wash directly contributes to the corridor's economic vitality, it generates consistent revenue, supports jobs, attracts a steady stream of customers, probably to patronize other nearby businesses as a result. It provides for demand for residents and commuters, attracts regular customer traffic, and it also takes, kind of going into what your vision, which is like, I understand you want maybe a restaurant there or something else that would benefit the residents of Independence Township, but it's taking a 25-year vacant land and developing, 22-year vacant land, I should say, and develops it into a multimillion-dollar development for both retail and public use. So...
I understand that.
Yeah.
And it's, and you're absolutely right. The point you're making is about the corridor, and I'm making the point about the town center area. We have a car wash in the corridor, you know? We, everything you're saying is right to the corridor, but my concern is that it's not in the corridor, it's in the town center area which was designed to be different than, you know, to be its own entity in the corridor. And that, that's, everything you said about the corridor being Sashaba Road, I totally agree with, but we're not talking about that, we're talking about putting it inside another development that we had goals on and envisioned, and it has inter-moving traffic. It's different than a direct-access road on the corridor, so that's where I'm having a little bit of difference of what, I agree with what you're saying about the corridor, but we're not talking about the Sashaba Corridor, we're talking about the town center, well, pro, you know, PUD, which we had to create to get that, wasn't it?
It wasn't a PUD.
No, was it Zone Commercial originally?
Yeah.
Okay, but in that, in that...
But it, you would be correct in saying that there is an intent and a plan behind the C2 zoning designation, and also, I think multiple planning commissioners have pointed out that this was designated as pedestrian area in the master plan, and what you have articulated is a vehicular use that generates traffic, is, you feel is not appropriate in an area that is designated as a pedestrian area in the master plan.
And it's internal.
Okay.
High-volume automotive uses typically are direct access and in egress to main thoroughfares, you know, and that is, that is a concern.
In order to, in order to protect health, safety, and welfare.
Can I address the two points on that? One, I would say, you know, any, if you put, for example, a restaurant there or any other type of use that is permitted in C2, it's gonna, there's gonna be a higher volume of traffic in there. I get it, maybe not as much as a car wash, but I would argue it could be just as much. And secondly, I understand that the vision was for C2 and for that type of, not for a car wash use, but it's been 22 years, and I think part of the issue is, after 22 years of being undeveloped, and you guys want it as a restaurant or as a other C2 use, it seems like the land is kind of talking to us, saying, "I can't be used as a C2 use, I intend to be used for something else." Mainly because, and I talked to the landowner for the, in the area, and they raised the point that they've done as much marketing as they can to develop a restaurant there to get somebody to commit to there, and no one wants to do it because it's not off, directly off of the, of Sashaba, they have to go into an access drive to see if it's not as visible, and I think now we have an opportunity to bring a car wash that, or a development, I should say, where it only benefits the public for pedestrian use, but also finally being able to develop a vacant land that's been sitting there for 22 years undeveloped. So that's kind of my perspective on that.
I have two comments. First of all, one of the goals of the Sashaba Town Center is to attract the type of businesses that can be successful by interesting enough patrons to attend them through both vehicle and pedestrian traffic, thereby getting the customer volume they need and not putting as much burden on the road. A restaurant can attract pedestrian traffic, a drugstore can, a grocery store can, a car wash cannot. That's a big difference to me. Secondly, it is my personal opinion, from a planning perspective, to not allow a use on a piece of property that doesn't necessarily meet the ordinance, master plan, goals, and objectives, just because that property's been vacant for 20 years. Planning and development is a long-term process, and eventually, if you don't allow a use that you really aren't, that you don't feel fits, eventually, that property will become valuable enough and the right use will come along. So I'm not going to shortcut our goals just to get a piece of property on that, a use on that piece of vacant property right now. That's my opinion.
I would like to say, I think your park looks very nice. It would be very nice if it were just the park, but I cannot support this development for this plaza because it's not consistent with the master plan.
Thank you. You got anything to add, Joe?
No, I think I've said my piece. I mean, I think we're pretty consistent.
Per our ordinance, a motion is not called for on a preliminary PUD approval process or review process. All it calls for is for us to give written comments to the applicant. So I think we've reached a conclusion here, that we don't feel this fits and meets the various conditions outlined that are necessary to be met for PUD approval. And I would suggest those are the written comments that we'll pass on to you, and you decide what you want to do with it, and take it from there.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, as soon as I get back to it, is approval of last month's minutes.
Nope.
No.
We got zoning ordinance.
Per our ordinance amendment revisions to Section 3.09, oh nine, this is to add a requirement that applicants post a sign notifying the community of a potential rezoning on any property they are going to... they, uh, are going to request a rezoning, um, in the broad form of PUD, PRD, anything like that, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, Megan and I have been trying to work on the logistics of some of the parts of this ordinance, so there's not much to update you on. I did include the previous draft, but, uh, we're trying to work out, uh, how this is gonna work in terms of the township having signage or making the applicant do it. There's risks, there's issues with both of those, but we're trying to work out the best solution to bring our, a viable draft forward that will work for township operations and, and, uh, be effective.
So you think it's appropriate to just, uh, postpone this at this time?
I would, yeah.
Well, I'd like to have discussion about it so we can give them guidance.
That would help too.
I mean, that would, that'd be my suggestion.
I mean.
I don't want you to bring it back to me and then me have a shopping list of suggestions.
Sam has, Sam hasn't really seen this, so it, it, I mean, I, that's certainly your, your call.
Well, and, and we can do that, but I would also add, this is something I wanted and I know Sam has talked about wanting it, so as, as you continue to, um, do what you say you're doing, I'd like you to keep us in the loop on it.
So if we're not gonna move on it and we're just gonna have a, you know, a discussion about it, I have some things, some things that I'd like to make myself clear if that's okay. The fifteen day thing is okay, but I'd like to see if, um, I don't know how we can make it a little bit longer. You know, we're investing in this, we really wanna give people as much notice as we can, but sometimes we don't know that it's coming. But I've driven around many, many communities and seen, you know, per, you know, land proposed for redevelopment or rezoning and those signs are up for a long time, so. And I think a lot of that, and I'm gonna go into the very last comment I have, which is, I don't, I don't personally believe that the township should be exempt from posting township initiated rezonings. Because we have township initiating rezonings that we're considering doing to get the master plan um, and the underlying zoning more in line per state, um, statute. So if we already know that we want to align our, our underlying zoning and master plan together and we're gonna do township initiated rezoning, I think for transparency, I just don't know why we wouldn't wanna be, we wouldn't wanna follow the same requirement for a few hundred bucks, make a sign and put it up and let people know that the township's doing it. I don't think it's really relevant who's doing it, whether we're initiating it or someone else is initiating it. We just wanna be forthright and let everyone know this piece of property is being proposed to become something different than you know it as. And now that might add a lot more grief to doing it, maybe it costs the township five hundred more bucks, you know, that we're gonna rezone it, but I would like that to be considered, that the township not be exempt from, um, letting other, letting the residents know what our intentions are. Uh, because I think that's coming. Some conversations about, um, township initiated rezoning, that'd be one thing. Then we could put it up, ours up longer. Maybe those are the ones I see that are municipality initiated rezonings and that's why the sign's up for a long time, because it takes a while to get it done. Where if somebody's walking in asking and they only gotta submit their packet two weeks before the meeting, that's all the time we got. That it would be officially, the request would be official enough that you'd wanna stir up the neighbors, you know? So that part's a little, that timing's a little harder to extend.
Yeah, this, the submittal deadline's twenty-one days in advance, so that's about as early as we would know.
So I would like to, um, say, you know, maybe like you're saying, you know, so maybe within, the sign has to be up within three or five days of the submittal, thinking that the person going through the, alright Megan, you got, you made a face, so what?
I, I made a face. I made, I, I, I made a face. I, I'm, as your planning consultant, I'm uncomfortable with having notice requirements that are at a minimum that are beyond the state act. So the State Zoning Enabling Act requires newspaper notice and, um, property owner's notice within three hundred feet. And the, the, the time period that they li, use is no, not less than fifteen days. So I would urge you to have not less than fifty day, fifteen days as the minimum. And right now you have a maximum of, of thirty days. You could have that as sixty days if you wanted, it's just when you create a number that's different than the state law. Number one, you, um, set things up to, for mistakes to be made because you've got different numbers running. Um, and then two, if things ever went to court and you had a different standard for that sign and when it went up, then the notice, that is a little tiny place where an opposing attorney might be able to open a door, um, that wouldn't be comfortable or good for the township now.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I mean, it makes sense. It doesn't mean they can't put it up sooner, it just, that's our stipulation. And then if we're gonna, if we could, if the township is going to, um, follow the same rules, we could put it up soon, earlier if we wanted to, you know what I mean? And I think we should extend it up to sixty days and we get our money's worth out of our sign if we gotta put it up, because we could get dragged down with, uh, meeting agendas or quorums or something that we couldn't, you know, or, or, or revisiting it as a board. Because doesn't the board have to approve it a couple times on a, a board initiated rezoning? Does that have to go through?
Yeah, it has to go through.
Two readings?
First and second reading, yeah.
So the time limit might be, um, uh, might be, I mean, I'd be fine with it going up a little earlier. You know, I mean, we, heck, we got big parcels, but for sale signs, I've been up there for a decade, so.
Also, it's when it's taken down, so.
And that should be promptly.
Well, so, that's a, promptly after what? Promptly after the final decision by the township board? Or promptly after the public hearing that's required by state law at the planning commission level?
Yeah, because the public, I mean, the township board meetings aren't technically public hearings on the first and second reading. So that's, that's the main point.
That's a caveat, because you could say public hearing, but then they have an opportunity to come and voice their opinion at both of our readings to try to convince us against it. So that's really public hearings, too.
We're treating it like one, I mean.
Right.
And then what I'm saying is, your planning consultant, it's a policy choice as to when you require them to take it down.
I say after the board.
Yeah, after it's.
I'd say within three, three to five business days after final, final approval or denial of the rezoning.
Is the posting date, for example, fifteen days, is that before the planning commission public hearing?
The planning commission public hearing.
So it'll really be up there for?
A while.
A while.
Could be.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, it's a big deal, what you're doing, what we wanna propose. So some of my other points quickly, I think that the two foot by four foot sign's too small. I think it should be, what is the max, up to the ma, the maximum size we're allowed, which is four foot by eight foot, thirty-two square feet?
The maximum size for a temporary sign in that sign district?
Sixteen square feet is the max ground sign.
I thought it was thirty-two for.
It used to be.
Okay.
Sixteen.
Alright, well, two by four is only eight.
Yeah.
And the reason I say this is, so picture, you know, so I've got a couple issues to tie to this. I'd like the sign to be big enough and us mandate the letter size be legible from outside the road right of way. So let's say like right now the standard for the building department is four inch numbers on a house. We should add a minimum, I think we should stipu, we, I just want this to be much clearer of an ordinance. Like we should say that, I think we should have something like the property proposed for rezoning should be like eight inch letters. And then maybe the, what we're changing, you know, from C one to C two and other current information should be four inches so that, because I don't want it to be as distracting to drivers trying to read it going by. So I think the text should be big enough. I don't want it so close to the road that it's an issue, you know what I mean? So I think if we're gonna make a sign, let's make it legible where people can read it with, with ease. Now, there's other stuff, right, that goes underneath that, that, is there a bunch of jargon we gotta add on the bottom of that? Or is it just?
No, because it's not.
Proposed for rezoning and then from, you know, C one commercial to R one A residential. Uh, contact the township for more information or something, right? Is that really what we're, we're doing?
I've seen it in Orion Township, I think it's almost a sheet of, sheet of plywood size, so thirty-two square feet. And it's basically, um, it's very generic, you know, so it would say proposed rezoning. You know, so it's, and then, you know, contact Orion, you know, call the number.
Right, yeah, this property's being proposed to be rezoned.
Yeah, so we keep it very generic, so they just have probably one for rezoning, one for PUD or special lanes.
We can have our own and put them up as we need them and warehouse them at the DPW or something, so we have to keep making them. So you don't think it needs to say from what to what?
No, I, I mean, you could, but again, then we're, we're creating custom signs all the time. And I think for the effort of cost.
I would be alright with that if it was big enough letters that they could read it and the contact information was big enough and we were just generally letting them know that we're proposing such a thing. I, I would be okay with that, but I think that we need to, we need to stipulate the size of letters and, and things that are legible and.
Would you wanna do that in the ordinance or would you want to have a guideline or guide sheet that's distributed by the planning department?
I was thinking that it would be a handout like at the building department, that this is our, this is, here's your example of what you need to do.
And you would want the petitioner to pay, you know, to do it.
Yeah, they gotta pay for it.
Yeah.
But, but to, but it would say like it needs to be this big, the letters need to be this big and this is the minimum information that needs to be provided on the sign. Now, how you wanna logistically rule that, um, I don't, you know, it doesn't matter.
Well, should the township have the signs and just charge the petitioner for the sign? And that way we are in control of the sign?
Putting it up and taking it down.
If you charge them for it, I mean.
Yeah, we think about that.
I mean, we can then charge just, you know, a temporary sign fee, I mean, it's minimal amount of money, but.
But we would put it, we would have our guys put it up.
Well, that way.
Take it down.
We know exactly where it's going.
And put it where it goes.
In the woods. We would, you know, we would know, you know, we would have the ability.
Would that be a little cleaner that way and they just pay us a fee to do it?
Yes.
Yes.
I think it should be more than a temporary sign fee because there's labor involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would make it, I would definitely cover more than your costs.
Well, it would be part of any rezoning application, so that would be part of the rezoning.
I would.
Oh, right, so the fee would include us putting up the sign if you ask for a rezon, that makes sense.
My thought would be the fee should be whatever we cost them to go out and have one made and do it themselves.
Well, we can work on, we would just be adding that to the rezoning.
Yeah.
You would just add it to the rezoning fee.
Yeah, I mean, we'll contact the sign company and try to find out roughly what something like that would cost. We got tons of them that we work with, so.
But the fee wouldn't have to be in any, wouldn't we have to be fixed in what we're proposing, right? I mean, the fee is changeable by?
By, by the township board, so there's really, there, 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 there's three things that we're talking about. One is the zoning ordinance text language, so what goes into the zoning ordinance? And keep in mind that to change that language, then you have to go through another amendment
Right.
and takes a minimum of three months, right? So, and then there's standard operating procedures and fees um, that can be shaped by the ordinance language, um, and then.
Not specified.
Not specified, yes.
Is there anything that the state requires the sign?
The state does not require anything for your signs, the state law is silent on that.
If, if we own the sign, seems like it'd be very easy to put a barcode on it.
Oh, yeah.
It would take you to a spot.
We'd have a QR code, yeah.
Where it would post the date and look at the facts.
Well, and if they're generic enough, you could reuse the signs, so.
That's the whole point is to try to reuse them. I mean, the QR code can't be right to the packet, but it'd be, maybe it takes it just to the agenda packets website.
Right.
Something that simple. Um, but that's something we can figure out. I, I highly suspect that, um, in a, in a few months, we'll probably be coming with planning and zoning fees, uh, changes, so this'll be a good time to do that.
Okay, does any of this seem unreasonable or too cumbersome?
I don't think so, I mean, we've got, you know, code enforcement staff, we got, you know, people, excuse me, in the building department that can also, uh, you know, assist us if we need to, so, or even DPW. As, as long as, uh.
Building department has a vacancy now.
They do.
In the union.
But, uh, you know, as long as, uh, I'd have to talk to Dave McKee obviously about DPW staff doing it.
But, you know, even if you contract with the sign company, you can pay, they could house your signs on, on their property and they can use their people to put them up and charge you for it, so.
Yeah, because I, I see this being more of a, I think the ones in Orion almost are on a, they're almost like on a stand, so they.
With wheels?
No, they don't have wheels, but I've seen them where they're not like posted into the ground, they're, they're setting on the ground.
Like a big A-frame.
Yeah, it's an A-frame.
But heavy enough it don't move.
Yep, that's right.
And we could produce those and that'd be easy to put in and put out.
And we throw them in a truck.
It's a matter of being transparent, you know, of letting everybody know what's coming, you know, that's all.
I think the only thing that we should, um, check with the township attorney on is whether the township has the ability to place the sign on an applicant's property.
True.
Or whether it has to be them.
Well, we could probably put it into the application, I mean, where they waive or they allow or.
Yeah, like our ZBA application has a, an affidavit they signed to allow.
Yeah, but we're talking about township initiated rezoning, that's where we got, that, I'm saying.
That's a whole nother.
That, that would be another thing as well.
That's the one we wanna talk to the lawyer about, can we go post their property?
And what if he says no?
Well, there's bound to be an easement that we could post it on somewhere.
Okay, I, again, I, I think this is something to talk to the township attorney about, not only, I, I think in both cases, whether it's a property owner initiated rezoning or if it's a township initiated rezoning.
I think we've bounced around some good dialogue to dial it in.
We got some direction.
Um, I, I asked you to keep Sam and me informed, I mean, I, I don't know if Belinda and Joe want to or if they're just comfortable in me and Sam, but, um, I, you know, I don't know that we need to have meetings, but you can just email us and we can correspond back and forth.
Yeah, once we refine a draft, we'll ship it over to you guys.
Yeah, or you can ship it over and we can read it too. You just don't have to.
I just, just some points out.
Okay, I agree with all these points. Uh, we ready to move on to minutes? Sounds like it. So approval. You think, I don't know, Sam?
Page two has an error on it.
Yeah, I had some too, go ahead, Belinda.
Um, top line, Commissioner Suter suggested that they instead of the.
Hey.
That's the only thing I've heard.
I got page, uh, three, uh, reference to NOTA, I think it's N O T A.
It is.
Yes.
Yep.
Or the Oakland Transit Authority.
Who is that in?
Uh.
Right near the top.
Yeah, it's near the top, I caught it.
Oh, okay.
Page four at the bottom, second line from the bottom. Um, I don't believe I said senior population, I think I said senior, senior center. Uh, page thirteen, Chairman Scarborough, who was going to be in the rooftop subcommittee, asked who was going to be. And that's all I got.
Well, can I make a comment about that? Are you gonna?
I got that later in discussion.
Oh, okay, that's common, good. Alright, well, that's all then.
Any changes? How about a motion, folks?
Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Support, all favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next item is discussion. Um, first thing I wanna discuss, and it was included in the packet, uh, later, the, uh, proposed amendments, uh, that Rowak asked us to make to the PUD ordinance. And, you know, it's unfortunate that this, uh, these, this always comes at the end of the meeting because then we're always tired and anxious to get out of here, so I hate to keep delaying this. Um, so you, you guys decide what you wanna do. Um, I'm looking for some direction here, as, as I said before, um, these are minor amendments. Um, they don't significantly change the ordinance. What they do is, Joe, you correct me if I'm wrong, um, they place more emphasis on open space preservation and so.
They're not changing, yeah, right.
So, you know, I, I've said before with this PUD committee, I anticipate that that will result in some other changes and that, that could take six months or longer, I don't, I hope not longer, but. Um, so my feeling is that it seems silly to go through and make these changes now And tha- that could take six months or longer, I don't, I hope not longer, but, um, so, my feeling is that it seems silly to go through and make these changes now. And then some other changes in six or nine months. And and because Joe's chair of the the open space, I wanna get his concurrence on that and the rest of the planning commissions, 'cause I I wanna be fair to open space.
The, uh, first of all, I don't see any real big problems with that, this is Jerry's cleaning cleaning up, but we're talking about, you know, PUDs kind of. And if we if we're talking about the delay of a few months, maybe up to six, and we have no PUDs pending or coming down the road, new ones of any substance that this will relate to, what's the delay gonna hurt?
PRD.
Okay, appreciate that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I I don't, I don't foresee any PUDs, I know we have a PRD, but that's a Eagle Ridge existing.
Yeah.
Project, um, but PUDs, I don't think there's any down the pipe, at least as far as I know now.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, if if if, if need be, and one was being proposed and we saw this would really, you know. Put some conditions on that PUD or maybe guide it a little bit, then maybe we would take some action on it, if you know what I'm talking about, then if it didn't relate to it, you know, again, you know, I'm fine with that, I yeah, I can get that over.
Okay. Everybody okay with that, all right, we will, uh, this wasn't a formal agenda item, so. Um, I.
Do, I got one question, I mean, does anybody see anything in there that they object to, I, it's not formal, we're not gonna change anything, but I mean, is there some bad stuff in there?
I I would just have one technical item in terms of, um, there's a change to item B three A. Which is the grant of the planning unit development will result in, and then added text is long-term preservation of open space natural resources, da da da, and one of the following. What I would say is just to make, um, granted, the PUD result, development will result in long-term preservation, da da da, and after setbacks, put a period. And then create an item B which says, granted, the plan unit development will recognize in one of the following, because it seems to me that you were saying that that's a must. And then I would have that as a separate bullet, so it stands, a separate item, so it stands out.
Okay, is there any way that you could email me that, you know?
Sure.
'Cause I'm, you know, not good at shorthand.
I can do that.
Especially at this time of night, and and I'll get back with Jerry and have him make some changes to that and and explain, you know, why we're gonna, you know, not take any quick action on it. Because it's not gonna, nothing is gonna be affected by a delay, 'cause we don't have any PUDs coming down, you know, it's like a bullet, and, uh, so so I'll clean that up, but I I I'll need your input on that.
Okay.
'Cause I'm not good.
Um.
My steno skills are.
I'm, I am, I have developed a, an informal follow-up list, and I plan on keeping it for every meeting and covering it under discussion. Uh, so at at various meetings, if there's things you want me to add, you know, mention them, um, so what I have right now, first of all, is the roof deck committee. I I wondered, we s- we established a a committee, where we are on that.
Haven't gotten any plans from.
From them, okay.
But do we wanna get, were we gonna have a committee meeting to give them direction of what we wa- wanted, or we're gonna leave it up to them to come to us and have us review it again?
I think. Yeah, he he was gonna revise the plan or or whatever he was gonna do to submit it to you guys, based on your your comments at at the approval.
Yeah.
It was a condition of approval, so.
That's my recollection, is we gave them enough.
Yeah.
So we gotta come back with a suggestion, come back with the changes from our suggestions, and then our subcommittee meeting's going to agree whether they comply or not with the intent of our suggestions, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's similar how we did well in the village and the town on that you were on.
Okay.
Brian, there there was discussion months ago about a milkweed in an apartment ordinance, are those zoning ordinance or code of ordinance?
I think they're general code, uh, now, oh, the the rental ordinance, that those are gonna be gen- general code ordinances.
Okay.
So, um.
They're just going to the board.
Yeah, the the building, the, uh, director, building official is, has basically got them ready, but, um, part of him going to the board on Tuesday was to start ramping up staffing for that ordinance if it passes, so.
Right.
Okay.
The milkweed thing was, just to confirm with you, did we ever get a second reading on that, the township board, because I don't remember they ever coming back.
Oh. 'Cause Paul. Yeah, Paul, uh, the treasurer, Paul Brown, uh, did that, real, 'cause it's just a, striking a word, and I don't know that he ever brought it back.
It only came once, as far as I'm concerned, it only came once.
So it was the first?
Was, and was it a discussion item even?
It was approved for the first read, for the first reading, but it never came back again.
Oh, okay. All right, let me ask Paul.
So I don't think it's of officially taken off the noxious weed list. And although it doesn't seem like a big deal for anyone who's still listening to this meeting.
Well, they're still on the ground.
You do need milkweed for monarch butterflies to survive.
Right.
And that was, uh, um, the state was in the process of taking it off their noxious weed list for the, that reason, and we were following suit, but I don't think it ever became truly official.
State.
Their state changed. Right.
I'll follow up with Paul and see where he's at, so he can push it to the board.
Um, next item was, um, hard copy of agenda packets other than plans, you said you were gonna talk to.
Uh, yeah, Supervisor File said hard copy of plans is is okay, nothing else. Commissioners are on their own, they they expect, you know, as part of this position, to be able to read, you know, page-sized documents.
Okay. Um, zoning not in compliance with the master plan, I I continue to make progress, and I commit to have that ready for next month, so Brian, you can count on that to be on the agenda. I'm damn near done, it's, it's a lot of work, guys.
I know, but it puts us, it gives us a more defendable case if we move forward with doing it than not doing it.
Yeah.
You know, and and being public that we're in process of doing it, getting our line, you know, so.
Yes.
I'm in favor of that as soon as we can do it.
Um, May, and during, uh, the last master plan discussion, um, we talked about possible training for brownfield development. I just wanted to mention that so I don't forget about it.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful, and, um, you know, I I don't, you decide whether it needs a special meeting, or is it short enough that we can do it on a agenda item in a regular meeting, I, you let us know.
Okay.
Um, number seven, master plan, just curious where you were on the rewrite?
Um, so I'm gonna.
I was directed by Supervisor File to, uh, prioritize with Megan the the items that you requested changes on, uh, to limit the cost. So, um, we're gonna come up with a list, I'll run it by you, Bill, but, um, we're trying to limit having to go to the board for more expenditures on this thing. And Supervisor File's comment was, it may not be perfect, but are we basically there?
So some of the changes, I mean, if they're significant, it require, I mean, everything, it's gotta go to the board ultimately, so.
It does, but but, you know, for them to, what's gonna end up at the board is gonna be a final, final, final draft, you know, we wanna make sure it's in that that format. Now, there's certain items that were brought up at the public hearing that may require more expenditure than others, you know, tech, the minor text updates, that's a simple thing. But, you know, um, there's some some changes about mapping and things like that that could get costly, and we just need to, Megan needs to let us know exactly what those, she's gonna break it up next week and figure out.
So if it, by way of example, map changing, cost, if it's, if it's, i- is it a matter of it's a cost this year? Or is it a cost at some point in the future, and instead of having the objective being doing it this year, can we change it to down the road?
Well, it it ends up eating into our.
It may not be down the road.
Yeah, I mean, it ends up eating into our consultation budget, which we may need with, you know, the large amount of implementation in there, you know, that we need to start, we, we're gonna start working on. We need, that's where we may need to, that consulting budget down the road, I I, you know, we're only in January, so I try to, I wanna keep that.
And I would be very surprised if we agree to open this master plan up again.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, this time, to my opinion, was questionable whether it needed to even be looked at, because the changes we're making, in my opinion, aren't, there's a big cost that goes with them.
There was.
So the significance of the changes carries big dollar amounts, but I would, you know, at, having my name on a few of the master plans over the last couple decades, and we've tr- changed a lot.
Yeah.
I would, I would be very surprised that in five years, we decide that we're gonna not just leave it as it is, and we're gonna go into a deep dive again on it.
And typically.
Seems, seems unlikely to me, but I'm not saying.
Yeah, typically.
A commission wouldn't agree to it, but it seems like we're getting it pretty dang close to.
And typically, the way we do it is we do a big one, and then the next one is a real light one, because there's no demographics really to change, it's very, it's a very small update, you know, and.
Cosmetic changes are what's going on.
Huh?
Cosmetic changes are what's going on in the document, rather than substantive changes.
Yeah. Yeah, most, I mean, I think stay relatively consistent.
We've, got most of our corridors established and area, I mean, something could change, though, it's possible. Megan, how do, how many communities actually go through the process, do you think, like, every five years, like, we probably could've skipped a couple chances at it, but.
Well, it takes us so long, we usually, it's like almost every ten years.
I know, we're almost into the next one, so.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, what is typical is that most communities will have a significant master plan update once every ten years. And they usually use the five-year, um, interval, so let's say if you did it on the twenty, then at the five, what you would do, what most communities do is then they will use that. I- if they are committed to planning, they'll use that five-year for something that is a smaller area or a particular area, let's say maybe stormwater or housing. Or a particular part of Sashaba Road and things like that, um, so.
Okay.
Or circumstances have significantly changed, so between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-two, what development looked like were very different. Um, so sometimes things are opened up earlier because of those.
Right, and I guess, you know, but I haven't been through this process, so I'm just, you know, I'm just smoking here a little bit. But you wouldn't have to go through a major, even if you had some semi-significant changes that would require zoning changes, you wouldn't have to change the master plan to affect zoning changes. To accommodate some physical characteristic change in your community, right?
You should.
Well, you should, but.
Yeah.
I, you should update your master plan in order for it to be defensible if you were going to do, to do any zo- uh, doing, for for zoning changes. It, and let's say you have, if you then approve two rezonings in a certain area because conditions have changed. Then at that point in time, the community should look at its master plan and change the things around there, um, change the things in i- in that area, so.
So the master plan should be in a three-ring binder, and you just change it.
I feel like our master plan is where we wanna be, we just are behind on al- aligning our zoning to match it more than the other way around, you know what I mean?
Zoning, right. Yes, yeah.
And a lot of that ti- that just takes time, too, I mean.
Right, so which is what we're gonna get into, you know, right, Bill?
Yeah. Oh, when do you think you'll have it, uh, thirty days, or is it gonna be longer than that?
No, we can have it in thirty days, I think, wh- what we're gonna have is a memo to Brian within a week that, um, lists the items and the costs. Um, and then, um, we would get input back from his department as to how to go forward, and the changes can all be made within two weeks. The complicated things are really the mapping changes that take a little bit more time.
Okay. Uh, next item I have, this is ZBA, uh, Mr. File has asked me to, um, seek, uh, the mass, the planning commission is supposed to have a liaison in the ZBA. Chuck, um, needs to appoint one, um, he has two positions to fill, so he has asked me to get a volunteer from this existing four of us. Um, no guarantee he'll be appointed, but he is looking for a volunteer, depends on, at probably my mind, probably, he's probably thinking it depends on who else he appoints, but, um, you know. So, I'm gonna look, um, can't be Sam, so I'm looking at the three of us.
Can can it be you?
Yeah.
I mean, you expressed an interest in that before, I, but I don't know whether you still.
I don't know if the chairman would, is that appropriate?
Um, I don't think there's anything precluding that.
Well, Linda, you've got, what, ten years of experience on the ZBA?
Just two years, but I.
Two years, okay.
And I did say I would volunteer.
Wa- was was it the, uh, were the rules in Texas like hardship, necessarily, it can't be self-created, they grant a variance, were they?
Practical difficulty.
For the, for the, were they the same as?
Our attorney, well, I'd have to look at your bylaws, but our attorneys in Texas would kinda give us a printout, kinda like Megan does, what they believe they're asking for, and, you know, if it fits. And would even give us a proposed, we didn't have to do it, but a proposed motion for the end of it.
We don't do it.
Our ZBA has always been against, you know, providing any recommendation or letter input.
Right, they just do what they feel is appropriate.
They they review the case and that, based on the standards and make their decision, I mean, I'm just there to answer questions.
I did two years as an alternate, because in Texas, we always had several alternates waiting in the wings in case somebody didn't show up, and then I did two years on the actual ZBA, so. And as an alternate, you said, you're kinda watching what's going on to see what's happening.
Well, will you do me a favor?
Mm-hmm.
The next day or two, will you read the the ZBA section of our zoning ordinance, if you haven't already?
Sure.
'Cause that pretty spells out what the, spells out what the requirements are, and then just send me a yes or no.
Well, I can tell you now, I would do it.
Okay.
Done deal, move on.
And there's ZBA classes you can, um, I've taken, um, that the county offers that we can get training for, uh, which is good.
Yeah. We're gonna do training at the next ZBA meeting, by the way, anyway, so, 'cause we do have an impending use variance coming.
So how many people are on the ZBA?
Five.
Five.
So we had seven in in Texas.
That's a lot.
But there's only a few that ever show, ever show up.
Well, well, we had, um, you know, Mr. Charles, who passed away, uh, from health reasons, and, um. Brian Gally was obviously on it, so, yeah, we've had three the last two months or so.
And do you have alternates?
We do, but, um, you know, a lot of times, that doesn't work out.
Okay.
We have one alternate.
Do they meet once a month?
Yes, first Wednesday of each month.
So I will send, I told Chuck I'd.
They were last night.
I told Chuck I'd send him an email and let him know.
Okay.
Yeah, the way the calendar fell, it was last night.
Uh, next item, um, there's been a lot of discussion between Brian and Chuck File, I think Dick and Megan, and then this afternoon between them and Sam and me. Um, the concern was like, what's happening, why did we get so far down the road in Tampa, Lona, um, why did we get this far down the road on the car wash? Um, so it it boils down to the, basically, communication between the board, the staff, and the PC. So, um, you know, we have these pre-planning meetings, um, what they wanna institute is, what I've been named for it, we've been calling it a pre-pre-planning meeting, but.
Yeah, this, um, let me fill in some of the gaps a little bit, I mean, Mr. File and I have been going through each process of the planning commission, now, we're only through two. But, um, A, to get him more familiar with how you guys do your job and what I do, what my role is, but, um, in doing this, we're trying to, uh, we're gonna have some efficiency changes. Some changes you may not even notice, but, as as the chairman said, it's a, we're gonna initiate a pre-meeting before we do the pre-application meeting. Which we do a pre-application meeting for pretty much every project, uh, it's not just PUDs, um, you know, where it's an, involves a subcommittee of the planning commission. But what we wanna do is get everybody from the review team, Jason's team, you know, Jason's office, and Ellen, you and Dick, and the DPW director, the fire marshal. Sometimes rarely, the, you know, it's only happened a couple times, the the sheriff's office, um.
Building official.
Yeah, the building official sits in, most, sometimes, it just depends if if it's relevant to him at the moment, but he at least likes to know what's coming. So we get everybody in a room, but before we meet with the applicant, we're gonna actually sit down and come up with kind of a consensus among, you know, everybody at the table. Before we bring the applicant in, so it's a, it's a unified message, and. So it's a, it's a unified message, and. I always give out the plans ahead of time for these pre-application meetings, so everybody's at least seen it. You know, they have an opportunity to at least create some bulleted list of, of issues and you guys do too. But it's gonna be in person, here, probably back there, you know, because we're gonna have a lot of people around the table, but. But that's the plan that we're gonna initiate and, and, uh, we'll probably have one in two weeks or so.
Yeah, and works good too.
And it'll be a Thursday afternoon, you know, just need an hour right before we draw the applicant in.
So the message is, we'll be asked to step up to more meetings.
Certain people.
Well, Sam.
They can't have too many, not everybody.
Yeah, and the.
Not all of us at once, three, three, the most three at a time.
Yeah.
And, and if you get picked, call it picked, lucky enough to get picked for, um. Uh, pre- pre-meeting on a particular project, the goal will be to keep you on any subsequent.
Yeah, if we, cause sometimes we have two or three of them, you know?
So, and Sam will most likely be involved in most of them, if not all, so, cause he's very.
Readily available, yeah.
And, and.
And I know a couple things.
So.
Mostly I'm available.
Yeah, so that's, that's the message there.
Yeah.
Um, two more things, the last one.
So they, you may see more if things come out of this. We're, we're trying to get this wrapped up in the next couple of weeks, but. Um, this is taking longer than we ex- we expected. We're spending a couple hours each morning, so, um.
It's gonna make a big difference.
Yeah.
I agree, and, um, there's a lot of things that Chuck and I have talked about, like I said, that you may not even notice yet. Or notice afterwards, but they're in the works.
Okay. Um, pipeline, just, I, I, I'm gonna ask Brian, I think every month, just to give us an update on what we're, what's coming down the line.
Um.
Not a lot of detail.
Eagle Ridge, phase three and four. Um, that's gonna be a very contentious issue.
What, where?
Eagle Ridge.
Behind, over off by Mount Zion, is that Eagle Ridge?
Yeah.
Where they're, gotta go through the neighborhood to get to their phases? Yeah, that's gonna be something.
Yep. It will be, a lot of people here for that, um.
Yeah, can I, can I ask, if there's, like the Meyer project, if there's something coming down the line. Is there any way you can send each of us the dates of the prior meetings, so we can do our research? I mean, this Meyer project was a lot to digest in a matter of six days.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I tried to provide the, cause I remember when this, when we had the pre-app, you're like, make sure when they submit, send the PUD docs over, which is a lot of reading.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I, that's fine, yeah.
You, you could just try and make them, you know.
Yeah, the Eagle Ridge PRD, Plan Residential Development, there's a lot of data and information and. I have, like, I have it basically organized by phase, um, so.
What's the big contention there that you're?
Uh, one single means of access.
Access.
Oh, okay.
So the roads are getting destroyed by the developer doing all of his construction, but he's, there's no agreement between him and all the people who live in the first subdivision that's. You know, so that's always.
With my understanding, he's agreed to pony up some money?
Are in their private roads?
Yes.
Maybe she's.
Well, who knows?
Someone, so, yeah, we shouldn't talk much more about it and, you know.
Yeah, that's true, okay.
Yeah, online, but, um, uh, the Hyatt Place Hotel.
Yeah.
Uh, behind Culvers, and in addition to the mobile gas station across the highway. We're gonna do a pre-app for that later in February.
Across, no, which?
Um, like, on.
Behind Tim Hort, or behind Tim Hortons?
Uh, next to Tim Hortons.
Oh, okay, yeah.
On the parcel on the road, not in the back?
Yeah, yeah, it's on the road.
Okay, the, the last parcel there on the.
Yeah, they just wanna add on to the gas, to, to the C store. And do a drive-through, so it's gonna be a special land use, but, um. Um, Monarch Grove just paid me today for their, um.
Back phase?
The second phase, which is, um.
Is that independent living in the back? Wasn't that what was proposed?
Yeah, they were cottages, but they've gone to two and three, three flex units, which.
Okay, alright.
Uh, we've had a couple of meetings with them over.
Back behind the built, way back in the back up by Wing Gate.
Yeah, it is. They've already met with the neighbors. Uh, I don't know what the result of that was, but, um.
Okay.
You know, they're.
Was a phase two.
They're moving, moving forward. Uh, other than that, that's it at this time.
Any word from Shango or Papalona?
I think Shango's gone away. Um.
What about the redevelopment of the PUD at Sashba and Clarkson? Any, any, any viable activity going on with that?
Well, we've had a lot of people looking into the Rite Aid, the old Rite Aid. Um, we did have a meeting with a prominent gas fueling station, uh, and, and, uh, said no to that, um.
Somebody's doing something there, they're doing some boring.
Yeah, there's, I, I don't think that gas, that prominent gas company, I won't name it online, is, uh, going away. Um, we told them in no uncertain terms, it was right after the Red Barn project.
Alright.
And it said, I, you know, you think, did you watch the meeting the other night? You know, um.
Well, it's so different than what we had proposed. When we did that PUD, it had a. Reception hall, like banquet hall in the back corner, it had an open air fruit, like restaurant market, it had doctor's offices, it had the Rite Aid, it.
Yeah, it was, it was a big project.
Yeah, it was a. It was a, the, it was, you know, the, it, none of it all got built, you know, it didn't get finished, but the, the, the design, the PUD was created, uh.
Yeah, and the, the wetland improvements were, like, cause there was a lot of wetland issues back there, they fixed that.
Right in the middle.
But then they stopped, you know, they put in the little circular road, but, um, still get a lot of bites about it. Might be a good, a substation.
Uh, Papalona?
No, I'm talking about.
No, I know.
That's what I'm talking about for the shareholders.
Exactly.
Cause they make a paddy wagon.
Anything happening on that one?
I, I don't know. Yeah, and that's it.
Okay. That's it, okay.
What else you guys, is that it?
Finally, I, I just wanted to get some feedback on that discussion sequence. I, I thank everybody for trying to follow it. Do you think it helped? Do you think it hindered? You know, to me, it seemed like it helped.
My only question is, or my only thought is, I, I prefer to let you know what's coming, uh, after, like, we can.
Informal?
How well, yeah, be, and not do it, um, you know, while we're still in the meeting.
Okay.
Cause, yes, they've applied, so it's public record, but we just wanna avoid any conversation about that.
Okay.
You know? Just trying to be risk averse over that.
Yeah.
Would, would you guys, what do you think about that discussion sequence? Do you think it worked?
Explaining the process, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't bother me, that's fine.
It seemed, okay, I didn't really, never seen a difference.
Let's people know what, what's about to happen.
Well, sometimes I just, you know, like I say, people like to get their stuff on the table and, you know, it's, you know, everyone.
We're used to you just going on and on and on, but we, we're good.
Hey, you're the one that goes.
I know, I know.
All right, at, uh, nine, I'll look at my better ones. Nine twenty-nine, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Second, oh, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I'll support it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Suppose.
You gotta shorten the meeting, my computer dies.
Oh, yeah.
Two and a half hours battery.